Thank you for your patience getting caught up here. If you do intend to speak, we will have a public participation portion of this meeting. We've got some public comment cards in the back. We ask that you please fill one of those out and bring it forward. And with that, counsel, ready to go? City Attorney?
What's up, Mayor?
City Clerk's office, ready? Thank you all for being here. Good afternoon, everyone. It is 1:49 PM. We are at Cape Canaveral City Council's special meeting located at City Hall Council Chambers, 100 Polk Avenue in Cape Canaveral, Florida. Today is Friday, June 27, 2025, and I call this meeting to order. With that, Mayor Pro Tem, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselmember Davis?
Here.
Counselmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Callum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
And Counselmember Willis?
Here.
All are here. Thank you. Counsel, this time, we are on item number four, to approve the agenda as written or with amendments. Are there any changes?
I think we need to drop Mr. Rooney from the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as is with the addition of dropping Mr. Rooney.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Counselmember Jackson, second by Counselmember Davis, to approve the agenda as written with dropping Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Counselmember Davis?
Four.
Counselmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tem Callum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
And Counselmember Willis?
Four.
All right. Passes 5-0 to approve the agenda. This time, we have public participation. I have two cards up here. The first one I have is Peg Schaller. Peg, if you're here, take your time, come on up, and we will get started. Welcome.
Thank you. Just briefly, I was not able to attend the meet and greet yesterday. I trust that you guys have vetted the applications appropriately and are looking for a candidate that has the best interest of the citizens in mind. If at all possible, I know this will be a public interview, some of the questions that I would have for the candidate is, number one, what steps do they see to regain trust from the departments to the citizens? So how do they intend to regain trust? Number two would be, what would the timeline be for an appropriate handbook so that if there is misconduct within the team, how would that be handled fairly and appropriately? And then the third would be, how would they divide their time between trying to gain new business and new potential in addressing the concerns of the current residents and businesses? So those are the three. I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Willis. Here recently, you were nominated, or you received an award from the city legal councils, and that's great. Thank you for that. Thank you for being on our team. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Shannon Roberts, Dr. Roberts?
And the staff and the council, and thank you for that. And I appreciate the opportunity for the community to contribute. I'm hoping that we'll be able to contribute, maybe depending on what the council considers appropriate. If you asked a couple of comments after each candidate, I don't know whether you would entertain our observations or not, or if that wouldn't be relevant or pertinent, but I'm just mentioning it as an ongoing opportunity for public participation, if we might. But if you all do not believe that's appropriate, I certainly understand. So I'm not quite sure how the flow of things will go, but it might be that we would have some observations. But I think, complimenting the previous comments, I think it is important to have someone that loves our city, is financially sensitive and resourceful, and helps the city move forward. I think from my perspective, at least, I think the city has a wonderful opportunity to progress with best practices and new ideas, and someone that listens to the community, and also is helpful to council staff and the community to introduce new practices that would help advance our city, that we so dearly love, and pay in particular attention to the residents to maintain our residential character and work with businesses, maybe to bring back some resources that I think they might feel a corporate conscience to do, to help us with our resource enhancement opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only two cards I have. Appreciate both of your comments. If there was anyone else who intended to speak, please come forward and raise your hand. We'll make sure you have enough time to get up here. Seeing none. I don't believe we have any online access at this time. I think that is it. We'll go ahead and close public participation, this portion of the meeting, which brings us to the items for consideration. We have item 6A, which is city manager interviews, and at this time, Colin, you come forward, Mr. Benzinger, review procedures to conduct the interviews with the following city manager candidates.
Absolutely. Thank you. Colin Benzinger, Colin Benzinger Associates, Daytona Beach Shores, your consultant for your city manager search. And just for everybody's benefit, my firm met with each of the council members, or talked to them, and got some input on what you're looking for, and what who might be, what kind of person, or what characteristics the ideal candidate would have so that they would fit well with the staff, elected body, and community. We went out and searched the market. We had plus or minus 50 candidates altogether, I think, and we vetted them thoroughly. We eliminated many of those 50. Came down to about eight, I believe. Council picked five to interview. One of those candidates got another job. Another candidate had his job threatened if he went for an interview, and so we're down to three at this point. The council has had an opportunity to meet with each of those candidates for approximately an hour today. Of course, there was a reception last night with the public, so the public had an opportunity to meet with them, too. And now's our opportunity for them to present themselves as if they were the city manager talking to you as a city manager. Typically, the process at this point is for the mayor to welcome the candidate as each one comes in, give them like three minutes to introduce themselves. I mean, obviously, the elected officials know them fairly well right now. Some of the members of the public may not, so we'll start with a brief introduction usually, and then just turn to one end of the dais, or the other, and ask one of the council members to ask a question, and then rotate down the dais. Let's see, we've got about 30 minutes altogether, so I would guess you'd get through somewhere between five and eight questions, something like that, so everybody would get an opportunity to ask at least one. This is sequential, so there's no reason why you have to keep on schedule. This morning, I was kind of the taskmaster, making sure people adhered to their times, although I did mess up once. But this afternoon, it's really your opportunity to get your final impression of the candidates. So if you need more time, feel free to take more time. If you need less time, that's fine, too. Whatever you're comfortable with, the point is for you to have the information you need to make a decision that you're comfortable with. Having said that, I guess we can bring in the next candidate, unless anybody, first candidate, unless anybody has any questions.
Prior to doing so, thank you very much for explaining that. Just want to check with the council, really first time here. Does that all make sense, and do we like that procedure?
I would just like to, is somewhere in the interview process, to give the public a chance to ask questions of the candidates as well? Maybe let them, I don't know how you want to do it, but I think that their input is important, and their questions are important. So we can fit that in somehow.
One of the things we've often done in that area is to ask the candidates to write their questions on a comment card, and then we can pass the questions to the mayor, and he can ask them.
Okay.
And if they give them to me first, I'll just go over them and make sure that everything's clear. I have had questions in the past sometimes that really needed a little editing, shall we say. What did you really mean here? So, and I'll be sitting right up there in the corner, so.
Okay. Thank you.
If that works for the council, of course, it's your direction.
I'm good with the comment card, doing it through a comment card. That way, it's clearly recorded for public record as well.
I think we need to be sure that the citizens sign their name to it so public records can list who, doesn't have to be spoken in public, but I think the city clerk would want to know who submitted questions.
Do we have enough public comment cards in the back?
Let's just give them a pad.
Okay. All right. And Mayor, I'm comfortable.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that recommendation. I think that that works well. If we have something, we can circulate, and that opportunity for the community here to jot those down. We did hear some questions from the two public speakers that I think we were all trying to capture as well. And there, I had three from Ms. Schaller, and also some emphasis and expectations from Dr. Roberts. And with that, counsel, I think as far as time, my last thing before we go is introduce themselves, opening comments. Is there two to three minutes, is what I was thinking, to?
Yes.
No more than introduce, we'll then go down the line, and then give them a chance to close.
And obviously, fit in the public questions as well.
So when we do that, do you recommend that we go through all three candidates, or stop and handle the public, and come back to the public and run them through again, or?
What you might want to do is go down the dais once, and then do the public comments with each candidate. So Mr. Ober would come in, do, go through the dais once, read the public comment questions, and have them answer them, and then if anybody has any follow-up or final questions, and then release the candidate. Give them a few minutes for closing, of course. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, I'm clear. If we're ready to go?
So we're going to let them introduce themselves, then we're going to go down the dais and ask our questions, then the public will ask theirs. Okay.
That's what I understand, yes.
And then wrap up, if you have any additional ones, of course, from the dais.
And do we have someone who will be helping us keep time?
I wouldn't worry about time too much, because again, as we're trying to get the information you need for your evaluation of the candidate, so if you need more, we'll just take more.
Thank you. Okay, well, we are a little after 2:00 PM now. I believe Mr. Ober is our first candidate. If, I think we're ready to go. Thank you. We've all had a chance to interview you and discuss one-on-one, and obviously engage with the public. At this time, we'd like for you to have the opportunity, a few minutes, to introduce yourself, and be mindful that many, some of the public who has not met you can have a chance to learn a little bit more about you. So, sir, the floor is yours.
Okay, very good. Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here, and it's already good to have a lot of friendly faces I met last night and today, and so I feel like I'm already a member of the community here. So thank you for inviting me out. Just to give a little background of myself, I'm coming from Washington State, where I was a city administrator, was close to the city manager position for six years, and I did a lot of great things there, a lot of improvements to the city, three referendums that I'm really proud of, and created a park and rec department, and just some of the highlights of what I did there. Before that, I worked in city administration in nine years in Wisconsin, so three different municipalities there, did a lot of great things there. And before that, I had four years in West Virginia, so I've been on the East Coast before. So somebody goes, "How do you come across the country?" Well, I came from California to West Virginia. I had four children that time, so now my children are all raised and grown children, so it'd be a lot easier for me to travel across the country this time. And then I'm originally from California. Spent my background, I have a master's in public policy and administration. Well, I was working at the state of California, decided to expand my career, and my bachelor's is in business administration with a concentration in accounting and minor in economics. So I really have a passion for local government, and I started at the federal government, kind of moved my way down to the best form of government, local government, and really love it, and love this opportunity, and just a great community, great people that are really committed, and I think I have the experience and the skills to really be a positive city manager.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to just go down the line, and maybe no particular order as we're ready, and try to each ask you at least one question, and if we get, when we get through those, we discussed, some of the public has the opportunity to participate and ask some questions. We're going to try to get those written down and brought here, and we'll ask them from here, so.
Very good.
If you're ready, we can go, counsel. No particular order, if anybody would like to ask a question? Mayor Pro Tem Callum?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ober, what are your core values, and which one is most important to you?
My core values, kindness is really important, integrity, trust, commitment, and innovation. And probably the core is integrity, the one that's number one.
Thank you.
Counselmember Willis?
Mr. Ober, would you describe how you would build and maintain trust with staff, city officials, and the community at large?
I would use the word communication, communication, communication. I think my leadership style is to lead by example. I'm highly driven, strong skill and strong will, and I think I drive that in the employees and the people I work with. Collaboration is really a key here with the council, and I think kind of the theme I've come up with already, if I get this position, was be driving trust between the, and unity between the staff and the council and the community. So I felt that was really important, and that's one of the themes I got from the input, in talking to the residents, and talking to the staff, and then talking to the council, is just really doing that, that community building. And so that's how I was able to do four referendums in my career, is going to the voters, and so getting the unanimous approval of the staff, unanimous approval of the council, and then you never can get quite unanimous approval of the voters, but you know, when you get 62% on a referendum, I think that's doing really well, that requires that. So I think that really demonstrates my ability to collaborate and work together with the staff, with the council, and with the community.
Counselmember Davis?
Basically, I had the same question about the city staff and the community and stuff, so you answered it with them. So thank you.
I can elaborate more if you want. I just, you know.
That was my concern.
You know, I have a passion for local government, so I'm in this because I want to listen and learn, and really implement changes and improvements to the community. I mean, your city managers are likened to a dragon slayer, and really taking on big projects, and really getting things done. And at the same time, you really have to manage the little things at the same time. So you have to kind of manage both ways, tackle some of your storm drain issues and major issues that you have, but also maintain the staff and maintain the roads, and do a lot of the services that we do day-to-day. So it's just balancing that all together is really important. And I think having a great team, and just working together, and collaborating, and having that unity and that team, and oneness is a good word, too, using on, working together. Not that we think all the same, but it's likely to point us all in a different direction. We can't, all in the same direction. We can't, we can't all stand in the same place, but we can all look in the same direction, and that's what community is all about.
Okay, thank you.
Counselmember Jackson?
Hello, Mr. Ober, how are you? I wanted to ask you if you've had a situation, and if you haven't, if you could describe to me how you might handle if you had an organizational culture that was dealing with public trust issues, how you could make a difference in that, be more responsive, and citizen-centric.
I'll just get right into an answer. When I came to Oak Harbor, I came at the end of a sewer treatment plant project that was supposed to cost $50 million, was coming in at $150 million, and there was a lot of lack of trust in the community there, and asking questions about how it can be managed so badly, and the over-budget, and I had to kind of deal with that, and I came at the end and just kind of had to clean up and learn from the mistakes of others, and how, where it went wrong. But, you know, I had to build trust in the community, and right off the bat, six months later, we decided to do a referendum for local roads, and there was a lot of concern that, oh, well, we've kind of lost the trust of the community, but we turned around and went to a different subject matter, and talked about the need for local roads, and it passed the first time at 54%. But some people thought, oh, okay, you have all these concerns in the past, that how are you going to get through it? And I just, having the passive attitude, in every referendum, all four referendums I've done in my career, three in Oak Harbor, and one in Rhinelander, Wisconsin, you know, people had told me, maysters had told me, you won't be able to do it, and I did it anyway. So I was able to, so I feel coming in, talking about a new subject matter, I think I was, we were able to really quickly build trust back in the community and get the votes necessarily, even though there was this controversial project that came in way over budget.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Ober, tell us what role performance evaluation should play in a city government, and how do you assess the performance of your employees?
I think communication, communication is the first thing. One thing when you do the annual review, the best practices, they shouldn't be surprised on anything you put in there. I'm a coacher, that's my mentor style, and meeting with, not a micromanaging, there's two different aspects of that coaching, is just trying to get on the same page and work together. And so I think that's really important, to do that coaching, and I don't have a favorite, you know, I don't really like to fire people. I knew somebody who liked to fire people on Fridays, and I don't have a, you know, I thought, what? I don't, I never think about that. I, you know, I want to be on the positive side, and want to turn employees around, and want to give them the benefit of the doubt, and work together, and some employees have decided that there's a different opportunity, and I came in in a situation similar to this when I came to Oak Harbor, and I showed up, and, you know, just by me being there was change. And so just working with the employees, and being positive, and listening, and learning, and, you know, knowing that, one thing I like in this business is, you know, there's kind of a saying, never ask somebody to do something you can't do yourself, but, you know, every day I have to ask people to do things I can't do. So I have to have that empathy for them, and appreciate them, and really servant leadership is really important, really consider yourself not as a servant, and serving them, and asking them what you could do, how you could help them do their job better. And when I did a performance evaluations, that's the area I really liked, was the questions, you have all the knowledge and the keys, and, you know, that's important to kind of know. But what I really liked is asking the question in the performance evaluation is, what areas can we help you do your job area, what areas are affecting you? And when I had to review 200 reviews, that was the area I focused my time on, because that was the key area, and I think that was really important, and really addressing those issues, and it really helped with conversations with people. Sometimes they would put something on there, and it was about, and I'd ask them about it, and it was about a past administration, I can't really fix that, but sometimes, you know, it helps you adapt and provide tools for them to do their job better, and I think that's really important.
Thank you. This question is from one of our citizens, asking, this is from Andrea Sheking, who wants to know what the referendum questions issue were about, and why you thought they were important to be brought before the voters?
All right, I'll start with the one in Rhinelander. When I came to Rhinelander, Wisconsin, we had a major thoroughfare, and we had our road plan, and that major thoroughfare wasn't on there, and anybody driving knew it was major issues and had potholes, and I asked the public works director, well, why isn't that on the plan? And he said, well, we'll never have funding for it. And I thought, well, if we never plan for it, yeah, we'll never get funding for it. So municipality nearby us, in Washington State, there wasn't, there was only six municipalities that had sales tax, a half percent sales tax, and they got an exemption from the state, and it was called a premier resort area tax, and people would say, well, we're not a premier resort area, so why should we do it? And I thought, well, if we get the tax, well, we could become a premier resort area tax. So I went to the voters, simplified it down, had the council approval, had to go to the legislature to get the special exemption. We did a provisional first, and then went back. They didn't count the provisional when they did the exemption for us, and passed 66% the first time, and I think 82% the second time with that, and they were able to get funding, $400,000 a year for local roads. And one of the benefits there is this city had a huge daytime population, so when you kind of talk to the voters and tell them that 70% of the people that are paying that tax, the sales tax, don't live in the city, and it's an equitable way to get revenue from people that are using our services, and be able to fix that road, so. And then the second one I did was in Oak Harbor, and that was similar. It was a local road sales tax, it was two tenths of a percent, and that was an option that a lot of cities were doing around us, and the city of Oak Harbor was not taking advantage of it. And so finally, we had a staff member from another city that really encouraged it, and I kind of got along with him, and we passed that one. And the last two, three, and four were related to fire. We needed a second fire station, and we were a blend of fire department with paid-on call and career, and we really needed a transition to career, because you really can't increase, there's only so many people that volunteer. So I was telling the chief, you know, no sense of doing this, just one referendum for the new station, because we don't want to build a new station we can't staff. And so went to the council and gave them kind of options, and, you know, they picked the higher one, and went to the voters for 12 new positions, and then that one required only a simple majority for increased staffing and replacement of equipment. And the second one was, we put in a new fire station and also a new equipment on that one. It required a supermajority of 60%, and it passed by 62%. We did four, so I did two related to sales tax and two related to fire, and we ran the fire ones together, one to staff the fire station and one to build the fire station.
That's great. Counsel, that's the only question I had from the public. Got some more? Next question is, why do you want to be Cape Canaveral City Manager?
Because I love Cape Canaveral. Short answer there, I even got it right here. So I love this career, I have a passion. You know, I've looked at Florida before, and I just feel it's the right time. I feel like I'm already part of the community right now. My wife had a great time last night, meeting with people and networking. I really want to continue my career in local government, and I have a passion. I think I went through some of the challenges that you're facing here. So the mayor of where I came from would tell people, it's not my first rodeo, so, you know, I'm very experienced, very seasoned in here, and so I have that capability and the skills to really come here, lead the city, listen to the council, and listen to the public here, and listen to the staff, and really implement a lot of the initiatives that, and directions that want to be taken on. directions that want to be taken on.
Thank you. And what do you see as our challenges and opportunities?
Yeah, I have that whole list. I could pull it out right here and just read it off. But, you know, certainly, there's a balance between preservation and growth, I think is certainly an issue. And how do you balance that with going from, you know, real quickly from four hotels to 11, then two more coming. It's just kind of changing the aspect here. I, I learned one A1A real quickly here. I think I talked to you on the phone and learned that right off the bat. And just that link there, and it's controlled by the state. And it's just kind of takes away some of the community. You have people with diversion of traffic, North Atlantic Street, those kind of issues, stormwater issues. And, and certainly I learned a lot about hurricanes and, and the issues here. And so, and the fact, but there's a lot of mitigation that's going on, a lot of good things. And Zach talking about it and, and a lot of good initiatives that you're doing. But you never could over prepare for storm drains. Sometimes it's a joke where you, they talk about downpours and 100-year flood. I've been in probably 500-year floods in my life, and I'm not 100 years old. So I don't know how the math is. So sometimes that happens that way. So, you know, so right now, you know, things go in, in different orders. And, and just preparing for that. And just, there's never, every city, there's never enough resources, financial issues. And that's probably a strength I have with doing some of the initiatives that I had. And I've had department heads that, you know, want a larger piece of the pie. And I kind of tell them, the pie is only so big. Who, who am I going to get a smaller piece to? And some of them, you know, what I really want is build a staff where we all think together. I remember a, a police chief that I worked with, and one of the council members wanted to add new staff. And, you know, the police chief got up and said, well, I'm not going to do it at the expense of another department. You know, if we can figure out how to grow the pie and, and not be detrimental to other departments, then, then I'm open to it. But I'm not going to do it that way. So that's the team effort. So we all work together. And like, the fire was a issue, you know, I had that conversation with the fire chief. I, I, you know, I could add more positions, but it's going to take away from other departments. And so we figured out a way to, you know, petition the voters. And, you know, I'm a believer that citizens aren't necessarily opposed to higher taxes if they feel like they're getting higher service. And that's been the key to my 4-0, you know, in doing referendums, passing every time with no failures, is, is following that formula there and, and just giving the option. And, and the level of service is really what we're all about here. We're not profit oriented. We're talking about level of service. So we just need to determine the level of service that the community and the council wants. And then the staff's obligation and duty is to implement that.
Thank you. And last, the last two questions were from Dr. Shannon Roberts. The third one is, do you plan and want to be in the city of Cape Canaveral?
You know, that's been a real priority. And I, you know, I'm, I'm part of the community. And that's what I love about. So I'm committed to making that a very much priority to, and that's where I'm going to ask for, if I do get this position, I mean, if you have leads on houses and stuff, I mean, I'm going ahead of myself. But, you know, certainly, you know, it's a limited area when you, when you try to do city limits. But that's what I love. I don't really want to commute. That's what I love about living in the community and working in the community. And so that's my commitment to, to try to do that.
Thank you. The next question, I don't have a, a name for the, what is the biggest challenge, I believe I'm reading this right, in, in your career so far? I don't know if I got that question correct. Biggest challenging career?
I dealt with that sewer treatment plant that came in at 150 million, that should have came in at 50 million, and dealing with the employee and the environment and the, you know, the, the cause of that and the, the, trying to change the culture and, and really be more progressive and more dynamic and working together was a real challenge. You know, you know, I got a little mud on me unfortunately, but, on that. But certainly, you know, you did the references and, you know, I'm just a great person. I've been told I was too kind sometimes. And, but I, I don't think you ever can be too kind. I think that's really important to, to listen to people and, and to be positive with them and try to help people grow.
That's excellent. There's last questions here. One of the questions I think we can handle, possible to see resumes. We should have a print copy. If not, I have a binder. We could certainly put that. And those are online and accessible in the package. That's another question for you exactly. I'm sure you'd be willing to share your resume, but we do have copies of that. Tell us about your, this is from Ms. Tamara Mulback as well. Tell us about your leadership and experience.
Well, I've been doing local government for over 20 years, leading and doing similar positions of this in five municipalities. My goal is, is first to lead by example, to, I'm very high skilled and, and have a high will to do what I, to do what's best for the community. And I love this work. And I think that kind of permeates with the staff. And, and I work well with, with staff that are committed to, to work with the community and do the best interest and really are, are really skilled and, and have that strong skill and strong will in their field and, and just really accomplish a lot. I mentioned collaboration is really important to me as my leadership and working together as a city manager. One thing, you, you, you only have maybe 10% of the rudder and nothing really happens unless you work together with the, with, with the council and with the staff moving together and, and with the community. And I think that, you know, if we all work together, there's no problem that we can overcome. If we all kind of agree upon the solution and work together, you know, we can address those issues and look for funding and, and be innovative and, and look for problem solving. And that's what I'm all about. And then the, probably the last area I mentioned was coaching in my management style. I, I really believe in working with people and meeting with them and, and talking and, and providing services and training for them to help the employees grow. Being part of professional associations, I think is really important. So it really helps them see what other municipalities are doing. So no one, we go to councils, a lot of your questions are going to be, well, what's the other municipalities doing? So it's good for us to network. And that's what I like in local government is, you know, nothing we do is proprietary. So, you know, we can look at another area, we can borrow a, borrow a thing. And we do that a lot in local government. And so that's just very efficient that way to look what others municipalities are doing. And certainly here, I, you know, I have the country. But, you know, I'm going to have to learn really quickly a lot of what the other, other municipalities are doing. So that's really important for me to network with my colleagues in the area and, and really learn the skills and the, the processes that are here.
Thank you. The, you've answered this, I think, in, in other areas about regaining trust. This is from Ms. Pegg Schaller. And she had came before and, and shared a few questions. In short, how do you plan to, to regain trust wherever it is, is broken within the community?
I think that goes back to the referendums that I've done. I really made sure we told the public what we were going to do, what we were going to spend it on. And we made sure we did what we said we were going to do. And that's how you build trust. When you start saying things that, and then doing things differently, that's, that's breaking trust. And I think having the trust of the community, the trust of the staff, and trust of the council is very important. So being a straight shooter, just putting it out there, giving you realistic cost, looking at operating cost and, and giving you options, I think is really important, too, on how, so that you can make a better decision.
The, I'm going to, I'm not sure I understand this last question, but it says, how to, how you plan to divide time? Is that correct? Does that question make sense? How do you plan on dividing your time?
Doing a lot of scheduling is really important. So, and hopefully I'll have some help there with scheduling and being on task and looking at things. And, and just really prioritizing, I think, is really important. Strategic plan, I kind of talked with you one-on-one a lot about it, and just having the strategies and really carrying on with that. And then communicating and looking for ways to meet together. I think one of the goals that I have of the council was meeting with all you and having a standing time on a regular basis where we communicate and talk. And certainly I'm open to, to resonance, you know, with, with scheduling time and communicating. And I want to hear from everybody. And my goal would be to, when I first come here, my first 90 days, would be, meet with every one of the staff members one-on-one and just have a quick conversation of, you know, asking them what, what they feel a city manager needs to do and taking advice from them and, and listening and learning.
One of the things the council has wanted is, at least for transparency and rebuilding trust as an employee manual, employee handbook. We've had revised versions, but being able to put that out to where the community can see it. Certainly, the council is important. Is that something you've had experience with and something you'd be, have the capabilities to, to do and/or revise what we have if needed?
Yeah, absolutely. I've done strategic planning and done goals. I'm going to look at that, done your missions, you know, look at the mission statement. Those are really important. And just a simple little thing, I've always had every year, a theme that I had for the city and started on myself. And then started, you know, so I have in all six years I was in, I always have a theme. I started out with imagine and then reimagine and then COVID hit. So, you know, so I, you know, one team and, and those kind of things every year. Results was one of our themes. And so I've always had an annual theme. The theme I kind of felt like after coming out of last night is just the unity between the community, the staff, and the council is, is going to be my goal.
The last question from Ms. Schaller is, what is your vision for this city?
My vision is to address the concerns of the council and of the staff and, and of the community. Deal with the stormwater issue, deal with the, some of the non-sexy issues like this, like the sewer plant, the wastewater treatment plant that's coming up to capacity at 75% and sometimes blowing out and, and eye on eye. And then also working on some of the nicer things, crosswalks across the streets and, and doing, and providing our concerns with the, with the port on, on issues that they have outside of city limits. And just working together, the team worked together with the council and, and with the mayor and some of the intergovernmental relations. And I've certainly have went to capitals and like lobbying and meeting the legislatures and, 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 and working on teaming up with them on the federal and the state level and, on getting solutions.
Thank you. I, that was it. And I got one more question. Actually, it looks like two and one here. It's more of a situational question from what I'm reading here. If you or a member of the, the staff were approached by a developer who offered a bribe, would you notify the city council? And how specifically would you handle that situation? That's the, the last question I have in total.
You know, I've been in areas that I've had to correct corruption. And I think the fact that I kind of stand for integrity and it just kind of shows, I've never been tempted before. I certainly was at a city where they started giving out free salt. You know, they couldn't get it. And next thing you know, they were giving out lots of salt. And, you know, two employees went to jail. And, you know, right before I came to Oak Harbor, I, I had to take receivership of an independent fire department when I was in West Virginia. So I had to address those concerns and integrity issues. I hope, first of all, I, I would be the kind of person that they would know the answer ahead of time and not approach me. That would be the first of all. If they did, then I'm certainly going to talk to the city attorney and the staff and, and talk to the police and get some advice on how I deal with that. Because, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not going to be bought off. I mean, it's not worth it. It's, I mean, I person of integrity and, and, you know, that's not how I play the game. And I, I don't want to be part of that at all. So it's, it's, you know, that's just not the right thing to do. Absolutely not. So, so I hope, first of all, they would just know I was the type of person that couldn't be approached. And, and I think I've usually conveyed that. So I've never been tempted before. I've never had anybody ask me for favors or anything. I've always been up the, above the board. And even trying to be very careful on gifts and, and lunches that they provide and those kind of things. And, you know, start at the small things and make sure you don't cross the line is really important.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Obern. Unless the council has any questions, that's all I have at this time. Or we have, I should say. Really appreciate your willingness to do this with our community. And we are very thrilled to have you here and hope you love Cape Canaveral as much as we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to need one minute. Again, I think we'll be able to recalibrate.
Okay.
Yep, that's it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Will we be asking the same list of questions of all of them?
I think that's prudent and, and would really help us compare.
Well, it gives us an opportunity to ask something different ahead of those.
Yes. I'm going to step out for 30 seconds. I'll be right back, Mayor Pro Temp. Actually. We hold for 30 seconds, Mr. Touchberry? Before we get started, was it the intention to have this online livestream going? If so, I did not have the computer up. And while we're doing this, if someone has the ability to sign in, assuming we're doing that up here in this computer, I don't have that capability or knowledge of the password. But I want to make sure those folks, if they are in fact participating in live streaming, have a chance. Welcome, Mr. Touchberry. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Am I close enough?
I hear you loud and clear.
A little too close.
Public, do we hear them out there?
Okay.
I think you're okay.
Good.
Thank you. What we're going to do is a few minutes to just have an opening statement, introduce yourself. We're each going to ask at least one question. And we got some questions from the community as well. We'll ask you after the council finishes.
Okay.
So with that, sir, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. I, I think before I introduce myself, I just want to first thank the council for the opportunity to come here. I was very proud and honored to be selected. And to go through this process, I want to commend you on the process. I want to commend Colin. He's done a great job. And I mostly want to commend your staff. I know there's several of them that are sitting in here. And they worked very long and hard, as you know, to make sure that everything got done the way it was supposed to be in the tour and everything. So I just think you guys did a great job. And, and I just wanted you to know that. So thank you for your hospitality. And to the community, my name is Keith Touchberry, and I'm currently the police chief for the city of Fausmare, which is in Indian River County, just south of here. I'm accompanied today by my wife Kimberly. She's in the audience. And we've been married 33 years. We have two children together who are also both married. We don't have any grandkids yet, got a couple of grand dogs, but no grandkids. And, you know, I would like to characterize myself as pretty much a lifelong leader and a lifelong public servant. I have served either our country or the, our communities, a couple of communities in Indian River County since I was 17 years old. I started off first in the Army Reserve and then active duty ranks of the Marine Corps. I was automatically discharged as a sergeant, relocated to Florida to be close to my father and to pursue career in law enforcement. 36 years of law enforcement and service. A lot of great things have happened during those years. I've enjoyed my career as a law enforcement officer. But as I've told everyone on the council, when you work in government, you really have two careers. You have a career in your profession and you have a career in government. And so I'm in government. And so I'm ready to take my career to the next level, having served for two years as our assistant city manager in the city of Fausmare. And just through a lot of experiences and, and training sessions and so forth, I feel it's time to gravitate my career in that direction. We've come to get to know Cape Canaveral and the people and the community and the history. We really like what we see. And I believe that I can make a difference as your next city manager if you should choose to hire me.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, we can go in the same order and ideally same questions, obviously, if you choose. Would we like to follow? If so, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Particular personal characteristic you have that will most benefit the residents of our city?
Leadership. I like to say that leading is not just what I do, but it's who I am. I've been a leader my entire life through conversations with the council and through the residents. I believe that there is a distinct need for some clear leadership on some issues, making fair and impartial and consistent decisions about how the city's business is conducted and how the residents are served. I, I think that's job one, from what I'm understanding. But what I bring to the table is a person who has served his community and his country and, and is a, is a good leader, professionally trained leader, not just through the military, but through all my training sessions in, through policing. I served as the president of the Florida Police Chiefs Association from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. We are the, the country's third largest state chiefs association. I've led many different initiatives through that association on our legislative committee and through our training committee and just, you know, keeping tapped with what's going on in Florida and how we can pass better laws to protect our citizens. And so I've demonstrated leadership, not just locally, but leadership regionally with being involved in committees, Indian River State College, Community College, used to be Indian River Community College, our region coordinator for training on our Region Eleven Training Fund. It's money dedicated to law enforcement officers, serving on numerous commissions and committees in my community, starting a nonprofit to help reduce crime and enhance our quality of life. Those are the things that I have done to demonstrate leadership. But I can tell you as a good leader, you know that you can't get to the end without the people that do the work. And I've expressed to all of you that leadership begins with one simple philosophy here, and that is we are one town and one team, and let's all get there together.
Thank you.
Councilmember Willis?
Thank you, Mr. Touchberry. In our interview earlier, you repeatedly brought up consistency.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that. But how, how do you handle underperformance within an organization, within a group of an organization? And what's your approach to accountability and staff development?
Well, underperformance is something that we all have to be mindful of. And the employees, the members of the organization have to expect that they are to perform. And if not, that there will be some accountability measure in place. I approach accountability like I do everything else. It has to happen. It's necessary for a sound behavioral climate, if you will, a good organization, one that's performing well, but ultimately one that earns and maintains the public trust. It's what government is supposed to do. It's why we have the power that we do as government officials. The public trusts us to do what we need to do. So making sure that we have a first and foremost, a personal accountability system we need to implement or should have a peer accountability system. Where coworkers and members look at one another and say, hey, you know, we don't do it this way here, or let's adhere to this because that was the council's wishes, or that's what our policy is or what have you. And so accountability is key. It's expected of everyone. But most importantly, as a leader, you have to demonstrate what accountability looks like. You have to set high but achievable goals. You have to set the example for how people are to conduct themselves and how they are to perform. And if they see underperformance around them and it's not being addressed, people aren't being held accountable, well, then it creates a situation or an environment where they feel like, well, maybe I can get away with that. And that's where that personal and peer accountability system comes into play. But it also comes with your line supervisors, those people who are responsible for those who get the work done, ensuring that they buy into the philosophies and that they themselves are holding the members accountable as they illustrate and demonstrate how they're supposed to be themselves. We're not going to be without our problems. Our people are our greatest strength, and they can also be our greatest liability, depending upon how they are led. But they are people and, and they have goals, dreams, and aspirations. And we want to make sure that we do everything we can to harness that energy and the passion they bring to the table and serve the people in the manner that we're expected to serve them.
Councilmember Davis?
I just want to say, talking to you yesterday and today, listening to what you, how you express, I want to say that you are true and you're genuine.
Thank you.
So my voice, I'm sorry. So I appreciate that, that you have a, you'll tell us what it's going to be and, you know, honest with us. So I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sorry, my voice.
Councilmember Jackson?
Hello.
Hello.
Keith. I've been calling him chief. He doesn't like that, y'all. Not in this setting. Hello, Keith. Thank you for being here in this section or portion of the interview. Tell me and tell us about a situation where you may have had the need to change the organizational culture to make it more responsive and citizen centric?
Yes.
And what you might have done to do that?
Well, that would be the police department that I was hired to lead over eleven years ago. The police department was lacking in public trust. There are officers there that were not conducting themselves in the manner that they should be. Unfortunately, the, the department had a history where the citizens, you know, felt like they couldn't trust. There was some high profile incident where an officer many years ago was indicted on six felony counts of various different crimes. And so when it came to that, we had to change the culture drastically. We had to set those high achievable goals and those standards like I explained earlier, but we had to watch and pay attention. And, but we also had to unfortunately, set examples for others to follow. And that example didn't take long. Five minutes, five months into my job as a police chief, we had an employee who was on a last chance employment agreement. If he was late again, he was terminated. And prior to that, you know, so I was made aware of that. We had an incident where it appeared that an officer lied to our, one of our supervisors. And so I'm a brand new police chief and I'm looking at this and, and my, our rule number one is you don't lie, period. You're a cop. You don't lie. And you lie to a boss, that's a problem. So we had to implement an internal investigation. And as it turned out, the employee that was on a last chance agreement was also the one who had lied. And the day that I went to put him under notice for internal investigation, he was late to come to work. So I had grounds to terminate immediately. But if I did, we would never have known who was dishonest. And so we had to put this cloud of this internal investigation over the organization to get to the truth of the matter. And then once we got to the truth of the matter, we took the appropriate disciplinary action and he was no longer allowed to work for us. We had grounds to terminate either way. But that sent a clear message to the members of the organization. And they learned very quickly what the standards are when it comes to honesty. The chief will fire you if you lie. But it, it got better from there. We did have to release some other people. But the community watches, the community, your police department is your hometown team when you're a small community like that. And they watch and they pay attention and they see officers leaving and new officers coming in. And they want to know what's going on. And so when you're in your committee meetings and you're talking with them, you tell them, you're honest with them. You say, we're doing the best we can to bring the best people in here for you and we need your help. So I think that, you know, overall answer to your question is you be firm and fair, you consistent, fair and partial and consistent, as we've talked about. But you hold the line with those standards that are values based and values driven. And you just make people elevate themselves to that level so that we can be, again, who we're supposed to be in the eyes of our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Touchberry, tell us what role performance evaluation should play in a city government? And how do you assess the performance of your employees?
It should play a, a key role. It can be done as, from a merit based system where it could be based on, you know, your salary or increase could be based on that. But really, those evaluations are designed to improve performance, to improve the quality of the individual and to help them continue to evolve in their profession. So you have to have a one, an instrument in place that is defendable in court, should you ever have to go there out, should ever, ever be contested. You have to train your people who administer that instrument, your supervisors who evaluate the employees. You have to train them so they do it correctly. And you have to give that employee the opportunity to respond, to answer to it, to agree or disagree. And, and it goes into the file, but you always have to have a plan for improvement. And that's the only way that you, you know, you get, you know, continue to develop quality employees. And there was a second part of that question, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes. And how do you assess the performance of your employees?
Right. Well, the instrument will do that, but it's continuous and ongoing. I mean, some organizations have an annual review, some have a twice annual review. But the, the key thing is, is if you see someone who is falling behind where they should be, you don't wait until evaluation day to bring that to their attention. You counsel, coach, and correct along the way. And you make them worry, give them the instrument, keep this in your, you know, in your box or your locker or whatever and say, pin it on the inside of your locker. So you know the standards that you're going to be evaluated, you know, when that day comes. And keep measuring yourself every day. Again, if we have a positive environment, your employees feel like they're valued and they have a sense of worth, purpose, they feel like they belong, and they're growing and developing as employees, they'll buy into the system and it'll be an effective system.
Thank you. Council, this time I've got the questions from the public. If we don't have any at this time, we'll go ahead and transition. Those, these come from the community. Many of them, if not all, are here. From Ms. Andrea Shay King wants to know, I'm sorry, that was not specific at a place there. Let's start here. Why do you want to be Cape Canaveral city manager?
Well, I've taken a lot, you know, in on this community and I'm a fan or fond of small beach communities. I worked for the city of River Beach for twenty-five years. And we have a barrier island over there, a lot of reach, you know, deep and rich in history there. And it was always, you know, fun patrolling those districts and on the barrier island and working with the residents. We're, we've been living on the coast, my wife and I, the whole time that we've been here. So we love the beach. We love, you know, what it does for our community. That's from a personal standpoint. From a professional standpoint, I've, I've stated earlier, I have a career in government and I'm ready for my career to go to that next level. I've been working on this for the past several years, assistant city manager for two years, like I said. And again, just learning and growing in the direction of city management. And I'm ready to take my career to that next level. Cape Canaveral is in my backyard. It's, you know, Brevard County is our neighbor county. And this is a great place to live and work and play. And I think it would be a great community for me to be the city manager of. I'm not looking for a stepping stone city manager position. I'm looking for a final home in my career to take, to capitalize or the capstone, if you will, of my career and, you know, in city government as a city manager. And I just think Cape Canaveral would be the one for that.
Thank you. What do you see as our challenges and opportunities?
Well, the recruitment brochure was full of lots of that information. And, and I've heard from staff and council about that. But I think internally, first and foremost, we've, we've heard about, you know, internal staff and maybe some morale issues and, you know, maybe some accountability issues or consistency in the application of the code issues. So I think we have to focus first on internally because we can't get out there and do the work of the people until we're right here, until the ship is right and we're on course. So I think first and foremost is to get with the employees and the staff and the council and finding exactly how do we right that ship and what direction can we chart that course? Because we're, that ship is already at sail. We just need to bring it up and, and keep it going in that direction. So internally would be first and foremost, let's make sure we're all on the same page here before we can get out there and do the people's work. But of course, that work will continue. You know, the infrastructure issues that we've talked about, I know that the cruise ships bring in a lot of people. So we have to balance the community's desires to keep that small town feel where people have grown up and lived their whole lives or some for maybe not their whole lives. And how can we preserve that while we capitalize on the potential dollar that is literally on the outskirts of the city through the cruise industry, through the aquarium that I believe is coming soon for whatever bright line would bring if and when that comes. You know, be forward thinking on all those things. Stormwater, that's a huge issue. You guys are on a barrier island and the land around you is eroding and that's typical of anywhere in Florida. So, you know, keeping a handle on that and making sure that you have your capital improvement plans in place to be able to address those issues, forecasting the need, planning for those needs and having the money there when it comes. Seeking new sources of revenue. No one likes to raise taxes. You know, sometimes that has to happen. Sometimes, you know, we can do the military. Are there other district, are there ways that funds can be raised so we don't have to raise taxes? Those are some heartfelt conversations that we would have to have with the community and do them long, in, as in advance as possible. But it has to be what's in the best interest of the community. And then, of course, just continuing to maintain the service levels that the city does through its staff and the hard work that they do.
Thank you. Do you plan to or want to live in the city of Cape Canaveral?
That is a desire. My wife and I have been talking about it. We've been praying about it. And we don't live far away. We know it's important to the residents that the city manager live here, especially in times of storms. They, they want to know that the city manager is here. And so that is something that we will certainly try to make happen. We would certainly talk to council and see what, what, you know, what kind of latitudes are there as far as maybe having a place and maintaining our own place where we still are. I know that's happened with some folks here. But I think the most important part is can I be as accessible to you as I need to be regardless of where I live? And I can promise you that I will be and I will be as accessible to the community as I need to be. And, but we will work in that direction. We'll be, we've already been looking at the, the real estate and we have a very good friend in real estate and she'll, she'll keep an eye out for us.
Great. Thank you. And those are from Dr. Shannon Roberts. Thank you.
I think she hit me up last night.
What is the biggest challenge that you've experienced in your career?
Well, I think it's always people centered, you know. Again, I fall back on they're our greatest asset and can be our greatest liability if not properly led. As a leader, I do expect failure because we're human and we have a plan in place for when it happens. The last thing I want to do is terminate someone's employment, but the public trust is what must be maintained. And so I think when you're dealing with someone's livelihood like that, their career, their future, you really have to tread lightly. And if, and if they're not the right fit for the organization, then terminating someone's employment is a necessary evil. But again, if we look back on why we are in the positions that we're in, maintaining the public trust is, is optimal. We can't really do that if we're retaining people that are not focused on what they're supposed to be focused on. And that's where we go back to how we onboard our people to begin with, how we orient them, how we train them, and how we, what kind of culture we create for them moving forward.
Tell us a little bit about your leadership experience.
Well, I did a little bit earlier. I can tell you that I, I honestly believe I, you know, not, no slighting any other military veteran in the room, but I honestly believe I graduated from the greatest school of leadership and that was the Marine Corps. And when you're in the infantry, I joke and, you know, it's a hard life and, and Ben, you can see it's a passion. I still stay in touch with guys I served with, guys who went to combat. And, but, you know, you learn how to lead by example. You learn how to set the example. You learn how to make those sacrifices. It can be a cold and lonely place at the time, you know, but someone's got to do it. And, but, you know, the leadership style that I have honed over the years, first of all, I've been a student of the process, reading books, talking with people, watching examples that are set before me and knowing that, well, I'm not going to do that. That's not how I want to, want to learn. I don't want to learn from that mistake or make that mistake. But I'm a situational leader. I believe that I can be that authoritarian when I have to be, but I would rather get the work done through the people, through their own initiative, through their own intellect, through their own drive and through their own passion, and watch the work as it's being done. And if we need to make some adjustments, we'll make some adjustments. And when it comes a time to say, this is how it's going to be, then you say that. But let people participate because the, the best leader is one that seeks input and creates ownership in those decisions. If I'm not the one doing the job, but those folks in that team are doing the job, then you tell me how it's best to do the job. And can we do it safely? And can we save money? And if that's your solution, I'll get behind that. And when you do that, when you lead that way, then it creates that ownership and that buy-in and it, and it taps into those, those four things I've talked to you about earlier called those intangibles. You know, we need to have competitive salary and You know, we need to have competitive salary and benefits to attract and retain employees, but we're not going to retain them if we don't maintain those four intangibles. When our people come to work, they need to feel like they have value, that they have, that they're, that they need to feel that sense of worth, that they have purpose, that they belong to the organization, they have a place here, and that their competencies are going to grow and develop, they're going to learn and evolve, or they have a chance to move out from one department and go to another, because they love working for the city. And if you maintain those intangibles, your salary may not be the top starting in the industry in the area, but they're not going to leave you for a thousand dollars a year when they love where they work and they love who they work for and who they work with. And so that, to me, is the ultimate goal of leadership, is to get people to want to be where they are despite that it's not meeting all of their, you know, those tangible needs.
Thank you. How would you go about regaining trust that may be broken in the community?
Well, seeing is believing, and I've lived through this as a police chief with some fractured relationships in certain neighborhoods. So it just takes one conversation at a time, one meeting at a time, one success at a time. If you have an issue or problem over here, then let's hear about it and let's fix it. And the moment you fix a problem, then the moment, I'm sorry, the moment the citizenry begins to say, well, we, we can have trust and buy-in, because they're listening and they're responsive. And the best example I can give is in a certain neighborhood, when we would have community meeting after community meeting, and, you know, seeing is believing. And ultimately, when we fixed the issues and concerns they had in the police department, then the conversations were no longer about the, you know, the, the people you have working for you that you shouldn't. They were talking now about street lighting, or did she's draining, or can we slow the speed down so we could, you know, you're talking about quality of life issues that are at a lesser level, not as emergent or urgent, if I should say. And when your conversations get down to those things, then you've done a great job. Then you, you're making headway and you're making progress, progress when you have that trust. But again, it's one day at a time, one meeting at a time, conversation at a time, but they have to see results. And ultimately, when you're told something in confidence, you keep it in confidence.
Thank you. The, how, how do you plan to divide your time?
Well, I think there's going to be a certain amount of catching up on the day prior. You have to spend time forecasting what's ahead, you have to make sure you have your calendar filled. If it's not my calendar, I'm not going to be there, and so it's got to be in that calendar. You know, spending time with the employees, spending time reading, you have to, you have to read everything, there's a lot of reading to do, not just emails, but, you know, the periodicals or publications in your profession, or documents, or statutes, or new ordinances, or proposals, or what have you, you have to spend a lot of time reading. And I'm also going to spend a lot of time communicating. And that starts with first listening, you know, as much as you can, but also you have to speak and get those directions out, so. I would think I would spend a lot of time in the community, I know I would spend a lot of time in the community, I've been asked about this coffee with the city manager, and I'm all about meeting with the public. That's the best way to interact with the community, so I'll be spending time doing that. I'll be spending time going to whatever regional city manager groups that there are, or I know some of you run a lot of committees, and if there's a committee you want me to attend or be there with you, I'm there. Some I may have to go all the time, I may be the city's representative, and I've done that before. But that is the operative word, you're representative. And I'll spend time representing you however I need to, when I need to, and as I need to. And I'll certainly take my guidance and cues from you.
Thank you. In the past, the city has had an employee manual handbook, and there's been needs for revisions, or at least desires. The handbook has been something that the council has wanted to access and making it accessible to the public as well.
Sure.
Is that something you would be able to help us do?
Yes, absolutely. I think first of all, making it accessible to the public is important, because that way they can see for themselves, you know, what our policies and procedures are. And from my own experience, I've told this story to one or two of you, thinking our officers are doing something wrong, when the reality is they are ignorance to our policy or procedure. Had they known it, they wouldn't have, you know, not trusted us on that particular matter. So I think it's important to be transparent with your policies like that. And as far as helping with that, you know, if we have the internal folks, you know, from your HR department or a key staff, you know, a core group of people who could revise those at council's direction, then that's certainly one way to go. Another way to go, if it's within the budget, is to hire a service to do it for you, and your policies or procedures end up getting washed through the system, and they're counterchecked against what's contemporary business practices, what's legal or not. Certainly AI helps with that, and it can crank out, you know, policies the way that you want them, certainly you have to review them and make sure it's what you want. But it's really all about how you want to go about the practice, because it can be time-consuming one way, maybe not so much the other, but the other may cost money that you really don't want to spend. But the reality is, if it needs to get done, then we'll get it done.
And the last question, these were from Ms. Tamara Mulback and Peg Schaller, was what is your vision for the city?
Well, what's council's vision? We'll start with that, because that's the city manager's role, is to carry out the vision of the council and the people. But my vision for any community is that we have one where we have reduced crime and enhanced quality of life. A community where people feel free to come and go without, you know, those inconveniences, and, and we're not just talking about crime, but we're talking about, you know, traffic, or, you know, a sidewalk that's not paved all the way, or those things that just inconvenience us from day to day. What are the solutions to these problems? At some point in time, we begin to just, there are things that we don't have to tolerate, sometimes there are things we will have to tolerate. But, you know, having a safe, clean community is the vision, having one where people can come and recreate, one where you have more residents than you have transients, because residents are what truly make a community. There's a certain amount of transient people that come through in every community, we understand that. Having a good park system, there's, there's a lot of studies about recreation and what it does to enhance, you know, mental health and wellness, physical wellness, but also to reduce crime. And, and so, you know, those things must be maintained. But again, you know, step into the council's vision and making sure that we get those things done.
I said the last one out, from those residents and citizens, we do have a few more. Sorry if that was confusing, but thank you. Here's a situational question. If you were, if you or a member of the city staff were approached by a developer who offered a bribe, would you notify city council, and how specifically would you handle that situation?
Well, bribery is a crime, and I take a very dim view of crime, if you could probably imagine. So we would follow whatever city's protocol is. First of all, is there a policy in place for that? If there is, we would adhere to a policy. Is it something that is reportable because it is an offense? Then, then we have to look at doing that. But first and foremost, calling the mayor, and then, you know, individual council members as necessary to make them aware. But, you know, we have to take action on the incident first, we're not accepting the bribe, we don't, that's not how we play ball in the city of Cape Canaveral. And then managing that, so first, you know, we don't hear or get those bribes again moving forward, but also sending a message that that's not how the city of Cape Canaveral does business. Don't come to us with that kind of offering to make things happen. We have a process and a way that development occurs in this city, and it's done the right way. And that's the way it should be in every city. But council would be notified. Again, I would have to look at whatever rules that you have in place, and I would also have to look at the statute, because I want council to know everything that they should, but the timing of that conveying that information needs to be done lawfully and, and by protocol.
This is, thank you, this is a, I believe this is the last one, I've got one there, the real last one. And that question is, what is your view of Governor DeSantis' propose, proposal to eliminate property taxes? Good idea or no?
So, from a government standpoint, I don't like taking any money from government coffers that can be used to better our communities. I believe in home rule, I believe in decentralized form of government. And Florida has typically been more of a decentralized form of government, but we can't keep taking away from our municipalities when it's their job to protect the residents and serve the residents that live there. We put our cities at a deficit. I know that initiative failed this year, I know it's coming back again next year. I don't know if this legislature has the appetite for it. I certainly have contacts in Tallahassee through the Florida police chiefs and our lobbyists up there to find out where that's going to land next year. But I'm generally opposed to taking any revenue from our cities. But then again, it's a double-edged sword, because I'm not just a government employee, but I'm a resident, and I would like to see my property taxes, you know, some relief from them. But I know what the cost to that would be. And so I lean more on the side of government, and we need that revenue, because there's just too many projects that need to be done.
Thank you.
I either scored points or made people hate me on that answer, but I'm okay with that.
I believe I covered it all. Did I miss anyone's questions, council? I think we're consistent there. Mr. Touchberry, thank you very much. If you'd like a few minutes to close, I think...
Well, this, again, this has been a wonderful experience, and I appreciate the time that every one of you, that I had to spend with every one of you. I learned quite a bit from you and how you feel about your community. And it's one thing that I can say about elected officials all across America in small towns, it's tough to be an elected official, it's tough to get elected, and it's tough to serve. And if you've never sat on a dais, then you don't know. And so you guys have tough decisions to make, and this is a tough one, it's probably the most important decision the city council can make, is who their next city manager's going to be. I know you'll make the right decision for your community, whoever gets the job, I just want to thank you for the opportunity you gave me. It's been a, you know, a personal, professional growth experience, and my wife could attest to that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
I think we have one more. We're at 3:12 PM.
Are we going by this schedule? Are we going by this schedule?
Are we going by this schedule? We had Mr. Touchberry at 3:25, and, and Mr. Taylor with, with Mr. Rooney dropping out, I think it's all shifted up. So really, we should be technically finished by 3:25. Yeah, well, no, I think we're actually a little behind with, it should be three, but I think we're okay. Is there any, any requests or anything needed?
Well, I'm just going to end up having to jump up and move for a minute.
Do you want to take a brief, a brief break?
That's what I was trying to get to.
Mr. Taylor, before we get started, I've got a request, do you, we're going to take a, a brief break, let's take five minutes, and then we're going to come back together and finish your interview. I'm sorry to, to bring you out, but I think it's for the greater good here. So, thank you. Okay, so we're at 3:13 on the clock back there, let's try to get back at 3:18, and we'll reconvene.[1406.26] We're going to go ahead and get started here in a few seconds. We're at 3:23 PM, assuming counsel's ready to go. Councilmember Jackson. Okay, I call the meeting back to order. It's 3:23 PM and we are continuing our interviews with the entire council and public. Welcome, Mr. Taylor. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate you. The way we're going to do it is give you a few minutes upfront to sort of have an opening statement. The council will each go through and at least ask one question. And then we've got some questions that we received from the public we're going to ask. And at the end, you'll have an opportunity to kind of have a closing final statement. So with that, if you're ready to go, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I want to thank you and the community of the City of Cape Canaveral for putting on such a wonderful process to bring me to this moment. I have had a wonderful time in this community. This is really my third visit to Cape Canaveral. I've told some of you about my first visit here for the launch of Pioneer Venus when I was a young man, that was before college. And I also visited Cape Canaveral many years later as the county attorney for Acuma County, Virginia, to take a look at that point in time. And this was in the, oh, the, say, the early teens of this century, looking at the relationship between Cape Canaveral and the city and the surrounding communities to understand the prospects for and the efficacy of partnership between such entities to advance the missions of the partners. And that, for me, became a bit of a model, even in those days, for the development of the Wallops Research Park on the eastern shore of Virginia, where I was the county attorney. And we've worked hard with NASA and the County of Acuma and the Commonwealth of Virginia on that strategic partnership to create a technology park to support Wallops Flight Facility there on Virginia's eastern shore. So it's, those experience, experiences have informed me of Cape Canaveral over the course of my life. This visit has been a great pleasure because I find the city thriving in many ways. It is certainly an exciting, pleasant, commodious place to be. I would love to be a part of your future. And I hope that my experience and training and capabilities are attractive to you and I look forward to our future together.
Thank you. First questions for Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Kellum, what particular characteristic do you have that will most benefit, excuse me, the residents of our city?
Thank you. My first sense of that question, Ms. Kellum, is that my professional life has been driven by prioritizing rational, data-driven decision-making. I think there is, first of all, a desire to advance the community as a whole. We thrive by moving forward together. And that togetherness relies upon engagement from the community, engagement from the staff, leadership from the city council. I think it's critically important that the staff play a role of providing useful, honest, transparent data to inform counsel, inform the community, so that there can be a rational process for decision-making to solve problems, advance new ideas, improve community infrastructure, and provide for a better future. So I want to believe that we all together share a common desire to find the best possible future for our community. Now, there may be disagreement about how we define the best possible future. And certainly, we covet, all of us in local government leadership, in my lifetime, have always coveted input from the community to inform that decision-making. And we, as a community, value, respect, and appreciate the leadership of the local governing body, who is the decision-maker around those decisions that chart our way into the future.
Thank you.
Councilmember Willis.
Mr. Taylor, could you describe to us how you would handle underperformance within the municipal organization and what your approach to accountability and staff development would be?
Thank you, Mr. Willis. So I've worked with organizations, large and small, from about 125 employees to over 2,000 employees. I have a systems mindset because each of these employee management challenges cannot be an individual. I value individual relationship, but we can't make up a new way of being for dealing with each employee challenge. That would not be righteous, I think the city attorney would tell me. That would not be fair. And I don't think it would be good service to the citizens. We need systems that are efficient and useful. I believe that every county employee should have an evaluation made of their performance annually. I believe that those evaluations should be short, simple, clear, and easily achieved because that's how they get done. In a busy local staff, it is a challenge each year to find the time to do the evaluation. So it's a matter of efficiency to keep those evaluations simple. It's also true from the science of psychophysics that your first impression is your best impression. So if you perform this evaluation, if managers perform these evaluations efficiently, that actually gives better data. So I believe in a short, to the point, evaluation that isn't about how the manager, or I, or anyone else feels about the employee. This is not a relationship checkup. This is not, you know, we're not dating. We're performing for the community and we need to have simple, clear, direct evaluative measures so that we can understand performance. They need to be uniform and fair across functions and across the organization. Those evaluations inform human resources and inform management, not just about the performance of the employee, but I believe if they're done well, evaluations actually inform the organization about the disposition or inclination of the individual employee. Because if an employee is underperforming or failing to perform, and that's reflected in their evaluation, then I take that as an indicator that they are misfit here in some way. So do they lack information? They don't understand their job expectations? They lack training? They need some professional development? Or if we look in the record and find that they have all of those things, are they challenged with a crisis at home? Is there something else in their world that possibly explains the situation that we could help coach or mitigate? And if we can't find any of those, then I can only take an underperforming report as the indication that though they may not have the words to say it out of their mouth, the employee simply is not at peace being here, serving our community. That is what the evaluation communicates to me. And so that becomes the basis for interaction with the employee, to ask those questions. Are you lacking training? Do you not understand your job? That's all good? You understand your job? You know what you're doing? Okay. Well, you're not getting it done. Is there something that's keeping you from that? No? All right, then this must be that it is not a fit for you because that's what you're telling me by your conduct. You know, what's the old saying? Actions speak louder than words. So let us have good, accurate, simple measurement of actions by which we can fairly evaluate and judge the conduct of the employees who are serving our community, level playing field, fair scoring, rational view of the whole thing. If they want to improve, we can provide helps for that. If they struggle with improvement, then we can help them find other glide paths that may take them to situations where they can thrive better and they can be happier, we can be happier, and we can have the performance achieved that we need to serve the citizens of our community. It's simple, it's orderly, it's fair.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
What is your approach to know the staff? What they're about, what they're doing, the projects and everything? What is your approach? I mean, I know you talk to them. Whether you want for the staff and how do you know, are you going to know them?
There are really several answers to that question. I am somewhat old school in the sense that I believe in management by walking around. I believe in encountering employees in their native habitat and not just bringing them here or to my conference room for a meeting. In fact, I think it's far superior to be out and engaged with employees in workspaces and encountering them in their real world of working for the city. I also lean hard upon and value input from managers, but I want to validate the input from managers with my own observations of employees in various, in various functions. And I am interested in all functions. I am interested in how the wastewater plant operates. I am interested in picking up the litter. I am interested in providing the parks and rec program. I am interested in the process with finance of building the budget. Involve myself in all of these things, not in a micromanagerial way. I believe in empowering the people that are in the departments and leading the departments to serve the community. But that doesn't mean that I can afford, as the manager, to simply close my eyes. I have to be observant, attentive, and engaged. I believe in having an open door for staff from all levels, from the building maintenance engineers, or whatever we're calling janitors these days, to department directors. They're welcome in my office whenever I'm not on the phone. If I can't hear them out thoroughly now, we will make an appointment and come back and have time together. But I need to hear data from every level in the organization. I welcome it and don't resist it and will work through validating my observations by multiple contexts, you know, multiple contacts in various departments and with various staff in order to understand the reality of the situation. I think in this context, my training and experience as an attorney is particularly valuable because lawyers understand confidentiality, I think, more deeply. And I don't mean to disparage anyone by this, but we are simply, we are trained differently around confidentiality concerns than other professions are. And I take seriously protecting sources of information because that is critical to my maintenance of pathways so that I continue to get information. It is my business to know all of what is going on.
Councilmember Jackson.
Just one second. Sorry about that, I had changed to make notes. Here we go. Okay, welcome again, Mr. Taylor. We appreciate you being here. Can you tell me about a situation where you may have encountered, or if not, how you would handle? A situation where you need to change the organizational culture in order to make the group more responsive and citizen-centric?
Thank you. That's, at least to my hearing, what, the thoughts queued up in my mind, Ms. Jackson, are to think about and talk about experiences I have had where, coming into an organization, I find, or have the impression, that some of the employees, for whatever reason, find me unfamiliar and perhaps even a bit scary. And when I first realized that, I have to say, it quite startled me. Because I look, when I look in the mirror, I don't see myself as a particularly imposing figure. I'm not very tall, I'm not very muscular, I work hard to not be very threatening. I want to be approachable, I want to engage with folks and learn what I can learn from them and share with them what I hope to be able to, share to, in order to advance and encourage and help them. So change, change is an interesting phenomenon because so often we become entrenched, and we all do this. We all have the way things are, sometimes known as the way we've always done it, or the way we've always done it here. or the way we've always done it here. Persistence by itself, with no measure of success or failure, no measure of efficiency, but just mere persistence does not validate any practice as a best practice for any community. And if we're going to have the best future for our community, and to be clear, I would like to be a part of this community, to have our best future for this community, we must review practices, consider alternatives, and find best practices for going forward. And we must be brave together to implement those best practices. I believe that that can be done, and I have striven many times to do that without judgment and certainly without condemnation for the practices of the past. This is not about fault finding. This is about betterment. And I've evolved over my career to tell local bodies, tell citizens groups, tell anyone who would listen, what I'm really about here is better. I want to create better. The council plays a critical role in defining what better should look like here. I know that elected officials, every elected official I've ever known, and I've known well more than 100, all covet the input of the community to help define better. So my vision, my path forward is to think in terms of creating opportunities that will bring people together in an informal setting, not driven by the issue of the moment, but let's just talk. Can I simply hear you? Kind of like the reception last night, but even the reception last night was to the purpose of these three aliens that flew in here from somewhere else. As a, what family? And I know the cell phone has made this harder and the computer and the TV and the rest of it has made it harder. But every family, to be a successful family, has got to have time together with the screens turned off where they can just talk. With kids, you gotta be tricky. Sometimes you take them bowling because they need something to do. And they will talk more in the car on the way to and from the group activity. So we, we, there is a play component, and I don't mean that in any disparaging way. Play is actually extremely valuable because it creates a level of comfort in the individual and that will open their mouth. So I'd like to have Simpson, a few simple activities so that create a context for the community and for the council, anyone who is interested, to simply share because that information is extremely valuable. In the sharing together, we begin to discover new ideas. We stub our toe on things. Oh, look, that's interesting. Do you know there is a way? That may be different from the way we've always done it, but we, it's doable from here. You know, in the COVID lockdowns in Green County, the big discovery that we had is we were trying to open back up. Remember the six-foot rule? Wasn't that lovely? By the way, thank you. God bless you. You don't have spots on the floor. I never looked at the spots. So the corridor in the main office building in that little county was five feet wide. What does that tell you? Two people can't stand side by side and keep the six-foot rule. So what had been a two-way traffic building, since it was built in the, I guess, the 60s, suddenly had to become a one-way traffic building. Now, that's pretty simple change. That was deeply offensive change for many people. But, and it took effort to share the information, to get the education achieved, to get people to understand that the traffic pattern had to change in order to continue to provide government services, which were deemed essential by our governor in the, in the pandemic situation. And so we communicated, we educated, and we kept reinforcing a way of being that was compliant with the COVID guidelines without being oppressive and provided, continued to provide efficient services for the community and to keep everyone safe. So those are the essentials of change. We want to do it. We want to do it for a good reason. We want the community, we want, we all want to understand together as a community that we are not looking to make change simply for the sake of change. We have an object in mind here, whether that is a mandate from above that we may or may not like, but it's a mandate above. And so as a believer in positional authority, my habit is to acknowledge the mandates that come down to me from wherever and share the news that whether we like it or not, if I can't find an exception or a modification to it, we are simply going to follow what is mandated to us as good citizens do. And I think we agree, we're going to be good citizens in Cape Canaveral. Okay. And again, on the edges of this, where there are outrageous impositions, understand, suddenly the line will be drawn over here because I'll be with the people over here and we will all be asking you, as the governing body, to tell us where the edges of compliance with the mandates are. Okay? But our, my basic staff energy is towards leadership unto compliance and unto achievement for the betterment of my community. There's a lot of communication involved in making change work, and it's still scary all the way to the end. And even on the last day before the lock, the, the modifications were lifted, I had citizens and employees tell me they really didn't like the one-way traffic pattern. And I would smile and say, I, I've never said I liked it. And in fact, I staunchly refused to offer an opinion about it other than the fact that it worked with meeting the requirements of the situation. And if we can understand together that there are some things that we just need to do. The medicine needs to be taken. The bills need to be paid. The future needs to be achieved. Well, we're going to do it. We'll talk through it. We'll help everyone feel as positively as they can about it, but irregardless of personal feelings, we will do it.
Thank you.
Yes. My question was, tell us what role performance evaluation should play in city government and how do you assess the performance of your employees? However, in your answers to a few, and Councilmember Willis is, I think I, I heard you elaborate through that answer. But what, when we had our one-on-ones, you talked in, in your packet that you provided. I'd like to, you're obviously more than welcome to echo or state anything you feel there. You talked about systems last night and throughout, and you talked about truth.
Mm-hmm.
I think it would be helpful to elaborate a little bit what you mean by systems and, and your desire for, for truth.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. One of my early experiences, it was in Fairfax, the big suburb of Washington to the west, worst, some of the worst traffic in the country. Not quite A1A, but some of the worst traffic in the country. And I was put in charge of development document review for all real estate development documents, deeds, easements, plats, all of that, to, to provide a process and oversight and to review that volume of documents for the county of Fairfax. The situation that I inherited included six, more than 600 existing files that, and of a backlog of files, and a stack of phone messages, some of which were six months old and folks had not received a callback. The lore, no one had stat, had maintained statistics on this, but it was typically said that it took at least six months to get a development package reviewed and finalized in that county at that time. And I looked at that situation and realized that there was no standard. There was no set of standards for that process. Each and every development package was treated as if it were a separate creative writing contest and individualized negotiation. And I said, well, we can continue that, but the first thing I'm going to do is write a standard book for the different, there were eight or nine or 12, don't hold me to a number, types of easements and types of documents that were used in that process. And we created standard language for each of those and then put a proposition out to the development community. So look, you can continue to do this as your individual creative writing project if you want. And when those individualized packages come in, we'll spend the necessary time with them with no promise of how long the process will take. But if you follow the guidebook that is now provided, that never existed before, but you, these are the rules. These are the standards. You follow the guidebook, we will get document review down to under 30 days. It's a crazy proposition to many who were hearing it for the first time, but that's exactly what we did. The, the development community raced to embrace the standards. They were simple and straightforward. We had no copyright. They could load them into their word processors. They could customize documents. But there were essential features they could not change. And we got a lot of compliance for the benefit of the community in those terms by standardizing them. And the development document review cycle was in less than a year reduced from six months to less than one. And then the second, if documents had to be resubmitted to check corrections, that was turned around in two weeks. And so that system, first of all, it treated everybody fairly. There weren't, there wasn't my favorite. There was simply the guidebook and a set of standards that any citizen could read. In fact, I had experiences with developers who would call me wanting to know where their packet was in my process. And I would have to say, well, I haven't received it yet. Or I received it, but I received it three days ago. Here it is on the logging system that we have. And I see that your lawyer has chosen to provide documents that are not compliant with the guidebook. He's doing this as an individualized project. You understand you can get much faster review if you standardize your documents to what is the county standard and that's available. We'll happily share that. Oh, oh, the response would come. And then would come the facts from the lawyer with the documents following that suddenly complied with the guidebook. It's efficient. It's simple. It treats everyone the same. Those are really powerful values for the community. Right? Because everybody can see what the rules are and we can all engage around a way of being that makes sense for the locality, sense for the community, and moves everyone forward together. So that was, that was the first system development that I did. I'm changing systems. You mentioned performance evaluations. It was common in places, and I don't know how they get to this, to have 12, 16, 18-page performance evaluations for employees. And no wonder nobody liked that process. It was too burdensome on top of the burden of work that was already in the, in the calendar. It's also way too much content. Ultimately, a performance evaluation is one simple yes or no question. Is this employee successfully doing the job or not? And there are a few set of ranges to that. So I've created in various places, five to seven-question evaluations. So dramatically reduced the number of questions, simplified the form, got it onto the front and back of a single page so nobody needs to find it intimidating. It's all based on the science of first impression, the science of psychophysics. There's a lot of literature out there that, scientific literature, that supports the notion that your first impression is your best impression. It's most accurate. And so we take performance evaluation from being an hour-long question and answer and fill in the block and write your justification kind of a process. And let's get it down to answer these five or six questions straight. Give me straight answers so that we can engage around what is our success level? Are there helps that are needed? Do we need more training? Do we need better definition of the job tasks? Or are we dealing with bigger or different problems, as I discussed earlier? It, it's, it's just simplifying and standardizing operations where reasonable and possible to support a fair context and efficiency of the organization so that we can improve service to the community.
Thank you. That's all the questions from the city council. Yes, sir.
Could I just say a word about truth? I wanted to share the, the bumper sticker of my life.
I did ask.
After doing what I've done professionally in communities in Virginia for more than 30 years, what I've found is that one of the struggles, and the performance evaluation is a good example, the, the deeds and documents are good. One of the struggles that we are all looking at in living in community is that we want to move forward together on the basis of a shared context. We need to have a shared understanding of what the is, is. What are the current conditions? What is today's truth? And then what are we going to do to tomorrow and the next day to move our community toward better? One of the problems with our modern situation is that there are so many forums through which opinion flows so that it can, can become very confusing and difficult to know what is real. Trust falls apart in the face of struggling to know what is real. So the bumper sticker of my life? Find the truth that is true. There still is, in this world, I believe, an objectively determinable, real truth. I make mistakes. We all make mistakes. But we, that's why we need to talk together so that I can test my truth against your truth and your truth and your truth, and we can come to a better understanding together of, so what really is the reality of our situation? Because, you know, you can think that traffic is not too bad until you walk up and down the block and read the signs and realize you live on a one-way street. You know? It, it's, you have to get the whole context. You have to find the truth that is true. If you can get the data to know that truth, then you can make rational, data-driven decisions that will lead you most efficiently and effectively toward better. And that, to me, is what this is all about. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. If you're still doing okay, we're going to go through the questions from the community. That's, at this time, all from council.
Good.
The first one is, why do you want to be Cape Canaveral City Manager?
Well, I mentioned my travels here over the course of my life. And I, I think it's a happy coincidence that I have nothing but positive associations with this place. Please don't disabuse me of those. I'd like to keep them, they're treasured memories. Coming on this visit, actually, I, I, in my impression with the memories of the past, what my impression of now is I find Cape Canaveral thriving in many ways that it was not thriving when I was here long ago. And so that's wonderful to me. And so that's wonderful to me. There is a joy in that discovery. I've been aware and had been following with great interest, because it interests me, the, the development of space industry down here. And would love to be more involved in that. I have a chapter of that from my professional life on, on Akamak County, Virginia. And so that, that's a, that's a big part of the attraction. I have worked more than 30 years in Virginia and I am at a point of being done and looking for closure with Virginia and looking for a different situation. And as I say, I have nothing but pleasant memories and positive impressions here so far. And so it seems like quite a natural, a natural thing to do.
Thank you. The next question is, pardon me. What has been the biggest challenge in your career?
I think actually the biggest challenge in my career has been in clo- in the dynamics around community situations that drive up against hard mandates that I can't change. As a county administrator in the past, I was in a situation where I was, and this is a little different because in Virginia, there's such a thing as a social services board. But the locality that has the authority, the board of supervisors is authorized to appoint the county administrator herself or himself individually as the social services board. And I was appointed as the social services board in Spotsylvania County. And the challenge in that was that, you know, 99.8% of that business comes right along in a, in a service priority to meet needs of some of the hardest cases of want or frustration in the community. But we had a situation of the removal of a child from a home that was legitimized under the social services guidelines and the facts as we understood them. And the thing is with a, a difficult social services case where you're talking about removing a child from home, that is not an action to be undertaken lightly, and it wasn't. And they never are, to my knowledge, undertaken lightly. It's very serious stuff. But the problem is that under the law, the applicable law there, the social services board, me, was strictly forbidden to release or discuss details of the case publicly. In fact, it would have been a felony with jail time for me to release the details of that case. Well, suffice it to say, there was a difference of opinion in the community over whether or not the child should have been removed. Those thoughts all existed in the minds of people who did not have the information in front of them that I had in front of me about that case. And so to stand in the face of sometimes frankly vicious objection and to not be able to defend myself, because to defend my, I mean, I can say, I have reviewed this case methodically as a trained, as a qualified professional. And I'm, I, I can only tell you that there is justifiable basis in this case. And I can only tell you that it is my frank opinion as the social services board that this action of removal saved the life of the child. That's my whole statement. That's all I can tell you. Ah, the tsunami of questions and accusations. So it's a challenge when the, the people who mean well and are genuinely compassionate and genuinely concerned for members of their community cannot have, I mean, that is the system of the law. That they cannot have those details. They cannot rehear and judge this case publicly as a community. Even if it were appealed and went to the court, the court record will not be opened to the community. And I think in the big sense, that is a good system. But standing in the moment of it was brutal, simply brutal. But I would not, and I, I want you to hear this, I want the community to hear it as a point of integrity. There is that truth that is true. There is that right that is right. And I won't violate it regardless of its cost to me personally. I simply won't.
Thank you. What do you see as our challenges and opportunities here in Cape Canaveral?
I don't know. You've got the beautiful signs that say, no dogs on the beach, but I know that's an important, an enforcement challenge. More broadly, and I think it's important to approach these things more broadly. Because first of all, I really enjoyed and appreciate and thank you for the tour of the community facilities. I love to see the rain garden as the rain garden. I have a good bit of experience around environmental mitigations of that sort. I see it as an opportunity to propagate those best practices, not just with public projects, but with promoting and finding a way to incentivize homeowner projects so that the rain garden concepts can be propagated through the, throughout the city. Because that really, it really is a game changer. More than you might think on the science, it really is a game changer for drainage and therefore for flooding for the community. I think flooding is, is a big issue. It is, after my time on the eastern shore where there are so many houses that are on pilings and so many beach towns where the houses, the construction is on pilings. And here there is, it's, I love the city. I, I, it is a, this is a charming place. The elevation must be a concern. And so mitigation of flooding, and look, while I was on the eastern shore, there were programs to lift houses off the ground and a whole industry of jacking up houses and installing pilings under them and setting them back down. I'll tell you honestly, it totally changes the look and feel of the community. So please y'all hear me. That is not a proposal. That is a joy that I found coming here. I like it on the ground, but we've got to help the ground. Do everything it can do to manage the water so that we can preserve the charm that's here. I think that's a doable thing, not easy, but doable.
Thank you. Do you plan to or want to live in the city of Cape Canaveral?
Absolutely. I, look, first of all, in, in this is, I think it's important for a local manager to be in the community that they're managing. I think I've, I've played the role of attorney too, because that was my background. And I've found sometimes when you're dealing with highly contentious issues, you'll hear concerns, I heard concerns. You know, you're saying that that's what the law says we must do because you think that benefits you or you think that helps or that's good for the lawyers or something. It was baseless in my opinion, but those were the sorts of objections that I heard among others from the community. The, the management role is different. And I think that effective local management heavily depends on regarding input from the community. And so, and, and regarding is not the same thing as obeying or following every individual comment that is made. But we certainly need to take in the data and work together as a community. And so, no, I, I think there's highest value in being here. And I can't imagine, I also loathe commuting. I absolutely loathe commuting. And, and so I have, you know, striven over time, not just to find a home in the community. I want the one on the other side of the parking lot. I, I want it to be simple. Because, you know, I get a little joy in about the first 30 seconds in the car and then that's done.
This is more, oh, I'm sorry. Tell us about your leadership experience.
Relevant to this position, I'll start from the moment of my time on the eastern shore in Virginia where I was hired as the county attorney. And we got through that process. We just wrapped up the contract and I was working toward the transition over to the shore. And then the county administrator called me. It was a colleague I had known for several years. He said, Mark, I don't think you're going to want to come. I said, what's up? He said, well, I've just been diagnosed with stage four throat cancer. And I don't even know how we're going to get through this. I don't even know if I'm going to get through this. I said, I'll make some phone calls. I'll be there Monday. We're going to get through this. And I moved over to the shore. And, and, and it was actually a four days on the shore, four 10-hour days on the shore and work remote in between. And that was hard, but we had smaller children and back and forth needed to be what it was for a while. But being in the community was critical. Having those days in the community and working close at hand with the manager. And then he descended into cancer treatments and was home for an extended while. And we just agreed to make it work. And I would take papers to his house if they needed to be signed and I would work on his behalf. And we cooperated together. And it gave me my first experience with a non-legal leadership role. And I thought, this is, this is intriguing stuff. I, I like this. And we had a very collegial time there that was very educational for me. And it got him through his cancer. It developed me as a professional. It was a positive all around. We also had a great moment of practical problem solving in that community. The computers crashed when they went to run the spring tax bills. Now, don't celebrate that because we were less than a month away from not being able to make payroll. We had to have income and we had no computers to print tax bills and send, send them to the mailing service. So we sat down with a treasurer and got a list of the top couple of hundred taxpayers in the community and started making phone calls and said, look, this is what's happened to us as a county government. And we need you to make the same payment that you made last year. We need you to make it voluntarily. We need you to make it now. And we're going to have an education program for the community and we'll get tax bills out when we can and they'll understand what's going on. But right now we need revenue. And the taxpayers to their, God bless them. They stepped up and gave us, and the word got around, and a good number of taxpayers gave us an even payment from the prior year. And that helped us avoid having to take what is essentially a payday loan. So in times of financial crisis, localities, and I'm sure Florida has a similar mechanism of some sort. But you, a locality can essentially take a payday loan. And, but it destroys your credit worthiness for a number of years, but you can get through that way. We got through that crisis without having to take a payday loan. And so that was kind of a, just a great moment in practical problem solving. And that kind of fed to other following moments. I, the law is a tool. I was trained as a law, a lawyer, and Anthony, please don't feel any disparagement from this, but the law is a tool. It's like a shovel. If you want to dig a hole, it's a great tool. If you want to ice a cake, first please wash the shovel. And you can do it, but it takes some finesse. And sometimes there is just, there is this practical neighborliness, like those phone calls asking for the help of the taxpayer. And really it was a great stamp of the, the integrity of that organization, the trustworthiness of that government, that the taxpayer saw the problem and stepped up. Leadership in, at the other end of this spectrum in, in Spotsylvania, the, as the county administrator, systematizing, I did the same thing with economic development there in standardizing and systematizing economic development incentives as I had done as the deputy attorney in Fairfax with standardizing that process. We standardized the process and leveled the playing field and got very good benefits for the community and led the region in jo- in business attraction and job creation in the years I was county administrator there. That was a revolution. The, getting the folks, so the, the fundamental to that work is finding vision that is informed around betterment, fairness, compliance with the law and consistency with the future vision of the community as informed and painted by the local governing body. I'm not looking to be, you know, anything more than the staff. I've told governing bodies for a long time, point me in the direction of the end zone. Trust me for a couple of plays, we will get the ball there. Okay? And we will do it in a way that creates a process so that we can keep getting the ball there consistently with that issue and we can move on to solve a different problem.
Thank you. These next few, maybe just briefly go through these, not necessarily rapid fire, but just trust is something we've talked about potentially broken. But can you briefly explain how you'd go about rebuilding trust in the community?
Listening, spending some time and, and building relationships. I mean, that's, it's that simple.
In the past, we've had an employee handbook, HR manual. One of those desires of the council was to understand that and how our, our employees are managed, but also the public to understand that. Revisions have been requested, may be needed. Would you be willing and able to go about getting that out, updated into the public and accessible to the public?
I, it's their community. I think it absolutely should be accessible to the community. If I may, I won't leave here without a hard copy of it because I, I do very well on paper. The screens are tolerable, but the paper is better. And certainly, I mean, I, I've, I don't know how long it's been since that document was last revised and updated. But I'm sure that there are opportunities, if it's been on the shelf for a while, there are opportunities for improvement.
Thank you. How do you plan to divide your time?
First of all, I think that will change over time. I think on the front end, this is like learning how to swim on the throwing myself into the pool or ocean method. And so, it's a lot of immersion on the front end and to hear, to gather input, to share a few things and I, and, and, but mainly to listen. Mainly to listen, because I'm, I need to learn in a finer grain. I have these broader impressions from the very good work that your recruiter did with an introduction to the community, with things that are available online, those are all great. But ultimately, there's nothing like the granularity of learning from more time spent listening to citizens, to staff members, to elected officials.
Thank you. And what is your vision for the city?
I, I would humbly decline to, to offer such in this moment, simply because there are people in this room who have been here since the nineteen sixties. I've been here since midnight Wednesday night. And it would be, to me, I didn't come here to, I'm not interested in coming here to change you. I have no opinion about and no energy toward wanting to fix you because I don't regard you as broken. I have a sincere desire to encounter you and to learn from you and to become, in fact, a member of this community so that I can be better informed toward the future. And on the way to that, I really wanna hear vision concepts from the council, from the staff and from the citizens. And to get the, the positivity out about where, where is that end zone? Where do we want our future to be? There are wonderful tools available in the law and in grant programs and all kinds of helps and supports to help communities thrive. It's ultimately your decision as council to say which of those we wish to avail ourselves of.
Thank you. Couple more. This is a situational question, scenario. If you were a city staff member of the team, were approached by a developer who offered a bribe, would you notify city council? And how specifically would you handle the situation?
Well, first of all, that all happens in layers. I think council needs to be aware of the allegation, or let's even take a step back from that, the anecdote. I've heard the story. And at that level, the story is just a story. It's not tested, it's not proven. We don't know if it's true or not true. It's just a story. But council needs to hear from the very beginning. And from me, it will come with a, please contain this communication, at least until we can investigate this, but I want you to know, I've heard a story. And this is how the story goes. Have you heard the story? Do you have any sense of the legitimacy or not of the story? All right. Somewhere, story may mature into allegation, somewhere allegation may, may mature even further. And there is a, there are propriety to communication with council throughout that full spectrum. You need to know what I know, and I get that. There are only points along the way and they are further down the way. Let us please not be gossips in the community, but let us proceed with an orderly and prompt investigation and do our best to get to that truth that is true. And then share that efficiently with council, along with a vision for what is the answer to this crisis for this employee in this organization at this time.
Thank you. And our last question is, what is your view of Florida Governor Ron DeSantis's proposal to eliminate property taxes? Is it a good idea or no?
First of all, I confess that in the work to be ready to be here more broadly, I have paid little or no attention to that proposal. I, and I, I'm a refugee of Virginia Governor Gilmore's idea that we're gonna do away with the car tax. And that just became a bureaucratic mess because it, and the car tax is still there. You should know. And it simply wasn't thought through. That's not a judgment about Governor DeSantis's proposal. And I think that the backside of that proposal, it's fascinating, these things are always cast as his proposal to do away with the tax. I would love to hear it as his proposal to find the replacement revenue and how that's gonna be done. And then, at that point, I do recall, I'm a resident of Virginia, citizen of Virginia now, I'm much more needful to hear and much more interested to hear the Floridian, because you have a, a different system in some ways. And I'm aware statistically it would benefit me, the tax situation would be better for me here. And I challenge you that the tax situation for, I think, everyone in this room who's not from Virginia, it'd be worse for you, it'd cost you more in taxes if you moved to Virginia tomorrow. So, the hard truth at the end is every community has to have resources to operate with. So, how are we gonna do that? And if the property tax, and I'm aware of many, many problems with property taxes, however they're done, over my whole professional life. The thing is, at the end of the day, there's got to be, we can revise a tax code, but there has got to be a vision for, okay, what is the fairer structure, fairer structure, fairer strategy for that replacement revenue? How are we gonna do that? Show me that and then let's talk about getting away with, getting away from the thing that we don't like.
Thank you. That concludes the questions from council, obviously, and the public. Couple minutes, final statements, closing.
All I'm gonna do, and I, listen, I appreciate the time that you all have invested and that you've allowed me to invest in your tolerance and listening to me. Because I know that some of my answers have been long, I've tried to make them thoughtful. And I, and being the new guy in the room, I want to provide enough context so that people can feel like they might get to know me a little bit, or that they might be understanding me a little bit. It's important to me to offer that to the community. So, thank you for bearing with me in that. This has been a wonderful process. If I leave today and never have the privilege of seeing any of you all again, I will regret that, because I've genuinely enjoyed this visit to your community, this visit into this process. It's a very interesting way that you do the selection process here. I've never been in a selection process in Virginia where I had occasion to rub elbows with another applicant for a local manager position. It's a new experience for me. It's very interesting. It's a different way of doing business and I'm taking some notes on that and will take that with me. But it's been a real privilege and it's been a real joy to be here. It is exciting to see what's going on at Cape Canaveral, both in the city and in the surrounds with the space industry. You are a blessed people. I think you're fortunate to be here. Certainly have a lovely city environment here. I've met a lot of staff that seem very energetic and excited about serving you and serving the community. And that's a, that's a wonderful thing to see. So, I wish you the very best future. I wish all of us the very best future and I very much hope to be a part of that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Taylor, thank you. And we appreciate you taking the time and your consideration for this opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are right at four thirty PM. That concludes item six A of the, the interview process. We are now on to six B, which is a post-interview discussion and selection. At this time, council, do we wanna take a, a brief break here? How are we doing? I just wanna check in. Good? Okay. Mr. Benzinger. At this point, is there anything that you need to conclude or that you recommend? Obviously, right now, the post-interview discussion in front of us, we could consider the selection of the city manager or take the necessary next step that we think is best?
Yeah, there we go. Yes, that's, that's basically what we need to do. I mean, you have a number of options. We could go back out if you don't, if you're not comfortable, you've got a great candidate. We could discuss the candidates. What we often do at this point is do a straw poll and see if you're, if you can come together on a candidate. Or you can wait until next week sometime. We recommend that you move relatively quickly because frankly, two things happen, one of which is candidates get jobs if you're, you know, if there's somebody here you really want, we'd hate to lose them. The second reason is, of course, that the public will probably be contacting you and there may be others that contact you and getting lobbied and, you know, you can spend a lot of time doing that and if you drag it out, it's just more and more lobbying. So, that's our suggestion. If you do decide to sleep on it, then to try and do something next week and get it solved.
Thank you. City attorney, anything at this time that you need to state or recommend?
No, I don't. I mean, Colin's giving you the kind of the, the options, so council just needs to give us some direction.
Thank you.
And I do have some ballots, if you wanna do a straw poll to see if there's some kind of agreement on who should, who should be your next city manager.
I appreciate you coming prepared with that opportunity. Let's hear from the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Is there, is there a point where we could go back out to the public now and see what they think, their opinions on what they've heard to the council?
Council, I think. I have no issue. Any concerns with that?
I don't have any concerns with the public stating their preferences, but do we need to be opening that up to lobbying as Mr. Benzinger is talking about? I mean, if we wanted to get public input, do we need to offer it to a wider range of people besides the ones that are just here? I know that the ones that made the effort to be here are very concerned about it, but we also have others that couldn't be here for whatever reason, because it's during the day. So, if we're gonna specifically go to the public, we need to go to the public.
I think the, the public that's in front of us today would be an opportunity that we recognize that what you're, what you've pointed out as far as this certainly doesn't represent the whole public, but this would be a missed opportunity if anyone desires to speak. And so, at least taking that into consideration in addition to the time of day and, and the greater public.
Yeah, I have, have no problem. I would love to hear what. In fact, I've asked people already what they thought, but I would welcome other opinions because it's not just our city manager, it's everybody's city manager.
Councilmember Davis? Okay. Okay, let's do that, if council's ready. Let's go to public participation today. Just to recap, we had, well, let's start from yesterday. We had the opportunity to give a tour to the city, to the city manager candidates. We come together, they had a chance to engage with the city staff and then a chance yesterday to do a final reception, engage with the public. Many of you were there, if not all of you. And today, we went through one-on-one interviews with the three finalists that we just heard from. And then we, we obviously have been a part of this interview with the council as a whole. After hearing all that, knowing all that, if anyone would wish to come forward and share anything with this council, I would say, if you've already submitted a card, I don't know if it's necessary to submit a second one, but we would ask you to please fill one out. And with that, if anyone chooses to speak, at least raise your hand and we can do it. Ms. King, Andrea Shae King, if you'd like. Can we come up to the, the microphone just to make sure that we have it? Please.
The TV screen is on in the lobby. Okay, okay, so before there's deliberation, I'm glad you, yes.
This meeting livestream is playing in the lobby? When you said, okay, just making sure I understand, thank you. Has that been addressed?
I don't see a problem with it. It's a public meeting and if someone wants to watch it, they can. Hopefully, it won't be painful.
Understood. Thank you.
Unfortunately, that's our, that's our sunshine lawn here, here in Florida, so.
I don't have an issue with that, I just wanted to make sure I, I understood. Thank you. Any public comments? Yes, please come forward. I have one with you. I will touch base with our city clerk on that, a separate card. One of, if, one of the members of the public spoke at the beginning and they would like to speak again, do we need them to fill out a separate?
If they spoke in the beginning, that's okay, just give their name and identify who they are and that's sufficient enough, if that's okay with the council.
Thank you. Yes.
Everybody, I'm Tamara Mulbach. Just a couple things. I was wondering, did we have any diverse candidates or women that we were able to identify through the process was one? And then, our last candidate that we just heard from, going back through the records and stuff, there's so many red flags there that I'm surprised they made it this far. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. The, I'll take the first one. The original list of candidates that were brought, I believe we do have some data on that would answer your question. Semi-finalists were selected out of that and then the council chose and got involved from those semi-finalists, certainly had the opportunity to look at the entire candidate list. And we chose the finalists, five finalists, in which two of the five had, had dropped out, for lack of better words, and the three remaining today are here. Thank you for your question. Colin, did that, I think we, in the semi-finalists, one of the five?
Yes, there was one female in the, the top eight. I should add that nationwide, females, for example, are only about ten percent of the managers. So, if you want an experienced manager, it's difficult. And we do- And we do frankly have a little bias toward females to try and, if they're close, we give them the benefit of the doubt, simply because we think we should grow that community. In terms of African-Americans, we don't, or other minorities, we don't really track that statistic. It's, you know, you can sometimes tell, but generally speaking, we don't track it, simply because I'm looking for the best candidate, and I don't want somebody knowing, or accusing me of knowing what they look like and making a judgment based on that, on who's going forward and who isn't. I think if I'm colorblind, there's not an issue there. We did have one female that was in our top eight, and frankly, she withdrew because she thought the salary was too low and that she would have difficulty making ends meet, so. But I thought she was a highly qualified candidate.
Thank you. Counsel, I reply to that. Any other comments regarding that? And if anyone does choose to speak as well, you can go ahead and come forward.
Ms. King.
Yes, please come forward.
Andrea Shay King. I listened to all three of these gentlemen, and I met with them last night at the reception, spent some time chatting with them. And you know, it's kind of interesting, is that first impressions really count, at least I believe they do. And I use the, the example of a young woman who's about to become a bride, and she goes shopping for her wedding dress. And she may try on dozens of dresses, but the odds are inevitably that she's going to purchase the first dress she saw, because that's the one that caught her eye. Last night, I spoke with all three of these gentlemen, I didn't know any of them right from the start, but from the, from the outset, I was very impressed with Mr. Touchberry. I thought that he was logical, he was grounded, he was, his experience as a police i- in the law enforcement community led him to become part of the city government as a, as an assistant city manager. I was very impressed with him. My secondary choice would have been Mr. Oborn. The only problem with, I had with Mr. Oborn was that he's not a listener, he's a talker. And I think that in filling that position, you have to be a listener. The third choice, Mr. Taylor, same thing, he's a talker, he's not a listener, he's not, and that's not to take anything away from him, he's a brilliant man, obviously. But I just sense that Mr. T- Touchberry is the quality and experience exactly that our community needs. He will listen, he's seasoned, he's level-headed. And one other thing that I noticed, and I don't mean to, well, I don't know, I'm going to say it anyway. Our sheriff's deputy was standing, he was watching, and I looked over at him several times to see what his reaction was, just to get a sense of it. And he was also very impressed with Mr. Touchberry, again, because of their law enforcement commonality. But I think it would take one to know one. And I, my impression last night from, about Mr. Touchberry was echoed by others. So just for the record, he gets my vote. If I had a vote, if I were on your panel, he would get my vote. And we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward. After Ms. Roberts, is there anyone else who would like to speak, just to get an idea? Shalor, anyone else? If you change your mind between now and then, that's fine, just trying to get an indication. Thank you. Yes.
Again, thank you all so much for the process that you used to give us these candidates to consider. And today's afternoon session was very complimentary, like has been said of last night, it's opportunity to meet them briefly, one-on-one. My personal impressions were that Mr. Oborn, I think, brings us some broad-gaged experience as a city manager in his work in, was, in the Midwest, as well as in the state of Washington. And I think he's had some practical experience with it. He also brought to mind some creative opportunities to get input from the community through the refer, referendum process, which we have used in the city in the past. That's been very helpful, I think, for us to get the real feelings of the community. And the fact that he's used that, he's also had some creative resource enhancement experience, which I think would be helpful for us to consider. I felt that he was a listener, as well as he was able to communicate some creative opportunities, so that's from where I'm coming. I also was impressed with Mr. Touchberry, because his incredible foundation here in the state of Florida, in particular Indian River County. Felsmere, as you all probably know, is just a delinquent community, very diverse in its own right, has the historical significance of being very important to women in the state of Florida, being the first place where we voted. So I just wanted to bring that part of his experience, I think, of diversity and gender appreciation as well, I'm sure is coming from the city. But I also felt he was well-experienced in criminal justice, and I would hope that with his two years as assistant city manager, he also had the breadth of expanded opportunities to deal with the other functions of the city. I think he would bring a stable, well-respected leadership to the city, and I think he'd be very respectful of staff, which I know is very important to all of us. I think he'd be able to work well with counsel, and I think the community too. He's mentioned that several times, that he'd be listening to all three entities. And I think he would be open to new ideas. That's one thing, as you all know from the past, I've always mentioned, that I hope we bring to the city some progressive ideas, progressive practices, and, and I just hope that he would be receptive of that if you all select him. But thank you again for the opportunity for us to participate, to listen. And the last candidate, as you all mentioned, very intelligent, but I think his style may be more, a little different, a less, less focused, and I'm not being negative towards him as a person, but I do think that we need somebody that's very focused and very dedicated in a responsive way to the needs of the community, council, and the staff. And that requires a lot of focus and detail, but listening and communication skills and compassion. One thing Mr. Touchberry said last night that impressed me is that he leads by hope and not fear. And I think that's very important for our city and our community, any community for that matter. But the fact that he values hope relative to fear to me so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shalor?
I echo the sentiments about Mr. Touchberry. I think he's a straight shooter, and I think he offers a leadership, but he may not have the experience. I hope that if he's selected, that we, as a city and as a city council, she told that he gets the proper mentoring. We, we set him up for success by teaching him the things that he doesn't know. He clearly has the values that are most important, as far as integrity and accountability, and, and I think he has the ability to get things done, just from his past record. I have to say, I'm disappointed that we really only have two candidates that we're interviewing today. I think we've been at this recruitment now for, I, I think we're going on a year, six months for sure. And in fact, that really, really only choosing between two is somewhat disappointing, given the amount of time that I felt that we would have to recruit. That takes nothing away from Mr. Touchberry. I, I do think that he would be my selection too, if I was given the opportunity to vote, but it, it seems like it's a very limited pool at this stage, and I would have hoped that we would have had a larger pool to be selecting from. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, counsel, thank you all for providing us with that, so that we can take that under consideration. Counsel?
Would you be ready to do a straw poll, if that's where we are?
A straw poll? Counselor Member Willis?
Well, I don't want to taint, taint the public's opinion, but I would lean toward Mr. Touchberry. I took a lot of extensive notes for all three of them. And Mr. Touchberry, in my opinion, is an active listener. Last night, I stood in the corner and observed as much as I could, and he would lean in, he would listen. He, he drew people to him. The other two gentlemen, very well-qualified, but they tended to talk more than they listened. I think Mr. Touchberry brings emotional steadiness to the role. I don't think he's going to be frustrated with, with anything. He's going to be very calm under any circumstance. I think that the law enforcement background has taught him that. I think he owns mistakes and looks to quickly resolve them. His reactions, his room awareness last night, to me, was impressive. Coming from a lifetime of sales, you know, you work a room, and you have to know where everybody's at and what they're doing, and what their interests are. And he moved about the room quite impressively, in my opinion. So that would be some of the reasons. I've got a list of more, but I would be leaning toward Mr. Touchberry if we were making a decision out of these three tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
I have to agree with Counselor Member Willis. I think that Mr. Touchberry shows a real leadership quality and integrity and a steady hand in what we need to get accomplished right now, moving forward and, and getting us, our ship straightened out and sailing right. I think that he is what our city needs right now. So I would have to pick him if that's, if we were going with what we have. And I, and I think, you know, I'm kind of disappointed that we had people drop out, and, you know, we started out with a lot of candidates, and we've had a few drop out, some at the last minute. It's, but I think it's time to make this decision, and Mr. Touchberry comes to us from close by, and I think he has a lot of integrity and, like, a steady hand, is what I'm saying, and I would, he would get my vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say the same. He's the person that will listen to everybody, he will trust what you say, he'll trust the public, and just, just bond at whatever we need to do. So with my voice, I'm going to say that I'll vote for him as well.
Thank you. Counselor Member Jackson?
I am also in favor of Mr. Touchberry. I think we had some really great candidates out of the three. I know Mr. Oborn has had some great experience with getting projects under control and things like that. However, I think where we are right now, that Mr. Touchberry brings to us what we need for this city. I like the responses that he gave me when we talked about processes and how to handle some of the challenges. And I'm very, I've been in a process and procedure world, is where I came from in the past, and without them, it makes it very difficult to ride that ship back up. Fairness and all of that for staff and citizens means a lot to both, you know, to me. So I did pick up on that as well. And I feel like he will have the negotiations skills to balance those relationships, as well as working within, you know, with contracts and many other things that we have. There may be a little bit of a learning curve, but I don't think that that's a huge problem. So I'm actually leaning that way myself, so.
Thank you. My comments to the counsel and the community is that we all shared, I think, a desire for more candidates. And the reason was, when you look back at 2009, the last time we used recruiting, I think there was well over 100 applicants that came in, and we addressed that in a, in a former meeting, but it was a different time. And since then, we've seen some changes, according to a recruiting firm. Colin, who shared, you know, the desire to be a city manager, there's, in theory, I guess, some decline. It's a tough job, it's certainly a job that I've always said I did not want myself, and it takes a special person, character, well-rounded, to be really at any place on, as a civil servant, and to work for the city of Cape Canaveral and our first responders. Every position has to not only work with the council, with their city manager, directors, whatever level, every single one of them has 10,000 eyes potentially, looking at what they're doing, the residents of this community, and that's a tough, tough job. But none is more important to this counsel as our city manager and our city attorney, the two we appoint. And the current status today is that our finance director has stepped up to help us as the interim city manager, and that department where he led has stepped up, and we've noticed some, some vacancies sort of be absorbed by the willingness and the desire to wear two, and some three, if not four, hats, where people are reaching outside their lanes to help the organization move forward. And so through this process, the expectation of sort of three-digit, 100-plus candidates came in at, I think, around 36 or maybe a little bit more, but the expectation was 40 to 70 from the very beginning applicants. And this is, you could cast, I think, a wide net, from my understanding. We could have gotten a high quantity of responses back if we would have pushed it, but the, the phase one strategy, as I understood it, or at least interpreted it, was to go out and utilize the, the contacts that our recruiting firm, Colin Bazinger and Associates, had, and they explained that very well to us, and reach out to those individuals with a publication of the opportunity, the advertisement for the position. And those responses that came back, we decided in the last meeting, we were at that point of, do we go back out for more, or do we stick to the process, proceed, and let's see where we are at this moment, right now? We have arrived. And I am grateful for the counsel to share that feeling, and, and I share the same with the, what we've heard today. And that, that makes me really happy, because it's not that we should all agree, especially when it comes to important things like our values, but it is very nice and certainly a hope, an aspiration that we can, especially with, there is no debate, this is the most important decision this counsel, I think, will ever make. And arguably, in the history of Cape Canaveral, only three city managers over the past 35 years have been, and there's been a lot of meetings and councils that's made these decisions, so I know we all take it seriously. And today, I got a chance to observe, as we heard on the tour, and with our city staff, and hear the questions, and be on the van during the bus ride, and sit in the back and just watch, and, and last night at the reception, no need to restate it, but I was extremely impressed with Mr. Touchberry. And before going any further with him, the other two candidates brought qualities and strengths that I would say Mr. Touchberry, on paper, is not as, as strong at. However, if I had to hold on to one thing that matters most, it was leadership. The other two are leaders, they lead in a different way, and I hope that they find a good fit. a good fit for the communities that they desire to serve, and I believe they will. But what Cape Canaveral needs now, today, I do think that Mr. Touchberry brings that to us, and wherever he lacks, I know that from my one-on-ones and conversations, is his management style and desire to see it through and get it done, I believe in him, and I have faith in him, and I could not do that without the support of this council, and that's mutual. I believe in this council, and most importantly, you, the people, you've been so encouraging through the process, so thank you for that. If, if I had to say one thing with Mr. Touchberry, it would be that he was a first responder, and is a first responder, and responsiveness in a community that deals with hurricanes, immediate needs, is really important. He was different on the resume, and Mayor Pro Tim Kellum actually brought this up, and it was a valid point, is when you looked at his resume compared to the others, he ranked one of the lowest in municipal city management experience, in terms of total years. He has been an assistant town manager, and the police chief for Felsmere, so there was a couple of years of administrative skills that we could at least cling on to, to understand operations. But where I had the opportunity to think and process that valid concern, is I sort of think that's almost a strength for us today, that
Exactly.
We're not going into someone who, I'll go to an old story, I was, I went and had a restaurant job, I wanted to be a server, and I remember some of the other candidates were, had a lot of experience serving tables back in college, and I ended up getting the job, and I was a bit shocked, and the owner of the restaurant said that those particular, those other candidates were very, this is the way I do it, sort of, lack of better words, stuck in their ways. I am not saying that's a case for today, but the, what he said was that, you have to learn, you want to learn, and you'll learn it the way we want, and there's going to be less resistance, and we gotta move now. So you don't have to relearn, and you don't have someone over there talking about the way they've done it. And that was what I sensed, some of those things, for me. And I think that with our city staff, we've got some institutional knowledge, they can help support the city manager, and I hope they're able to connect well, and we're gonna see. But we've got a, I think, a real opportunity here to get our city healthy, and the, Mr. Touchberry, obviously pursued leadership as a constitutional officer, as a sheriff for Indian River County, and one of the benefits of that was I got a chance to hear some of his talks and things on YouTube. And some of the things that he was talking about, you could remove and replace some of the challenges Cape Canaveral was happening, I mean, identical, and I shared that with him in the one-on-one, is that his desire, aspiration and mindset to go and improve and lead that agency and organization did not come to fruition, but that desire and aspiration is within him, and I think we have a home for him here. So, if he is willing, obviously, it takes mutual, there's still some more hurdles we would have to get through, but if a straw poll is necessary, we certainly could do that.
I don't think it's necessary.
I think we just did it.
Yeah.
City attorney?
I'm reading the straw poll correctly. I think, you know, the next step would be to make a motion, if you desire to appoint, subject to
Contract.
A contract being negotiated and brought back to the city council for approval. And if you get, if you make that motion, then I would get with Colin, and we would, Colin, and then we would get with Mr. Touchberry and work on a contract.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to prepare a contract for Mr. Touchberry, and upon acceptance, to extend the position of city manager.
I'll second.
The motion, what do we have? We had a motion second, motion by Councilmember Willis.
Second.
I think, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah.
Just making sure I'm clear. As stated, are there, is there any, let me restate that again, a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum. Any further discussion? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis?
Four.
The motion passes 5-0, and with that, I do believe, looking further down the agenda, we can adjourn, there's no reports. Okay.
Here we let Colin do his, more of his straw.
It's 5:07, and with that, meeting adjourned.
I think we made this.